I couldn't resist that. Good afternoon. It's good to be here at our mid-month meeting. Mr. Brown, has the meeting been properly advertised?
Yes, sir, it has.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. Mr. Moses, would you mind again, please, sir, leading us in our invocation and our pledge of allegiance?
Always good to pray. Gracious, most benevolent Father, we thank you for this beautiful day and your bountiful blessings. And Father God, we pray for divine insight for this deliberated body. And Father God, we want to pause for all the families who are struggling in this COVID environment. We pray that you will strengthen them and be with them. Pray for those who are actually going through, as well as the families who are comforting them. And Father God, we thank you for all that you do. This we thank you for, in Christ's name. Amen. I pray that you lead us to the highest praise of America.
Thank you, sir. All right, let's maximize our time if we will. Mr. Long, are you ready?
Not all accustomed to being first out of the chute.
I know.
Okay. All right. I'll kind of start going through the list on these pretty quickly. Island's Highway Safety Improvements, we've had some meetings about that with the Development Authority and with the HMI and what they're trying to do with some of their improvements and getting finished there. So we've done a little bit of work on that, trying to make sure that our Industrial Authority has proper access and that we're safe with what's happening there with the entrance and exits onto the highway. Last month, I reported about Lewis-Frezer Road Bridge, that we had been in contact with DOT, that they were looking at using 11-foot lanes, because that bridge now has 11-foot lanes. That, we did get confirmation that the Department of Transportation did change those to 12-foot wide lanes, which matches our widening process that we've been doing going through with Lewis-Frezer Road. Stormwater and PDS, we did finish up an audit with EPD regarding our NPDAS permit, and that got finished late last month. The drought study, we turned everything in across the city, across the county. We did get a few comments back the other day that we will be able to address. One of them was, they were a little unclear on how we got the depths of the ponds. For the most part, what we ended up doing was putting a sanding device out there, and we actually shot elevations of the bottom of the ponds. So we do have record information on that, so we're going to turn that stuff back around to, back to Chief Darby, and that'll get turned back into the ISO folks, so that that gets, that can get finished up. Trade Hill Road Drainage. Right now, we look to this thing 12 ways to Sunday. And finally, I think we're starting to work out a few easements for it. This is a blown-up version, but Island's Highway is over here, Fort Morris Road is way down over here. This pipe, there's a big area behind people's houses that was not draining here. Water was really backed up and not able to get out this area right here. It used to kind of go through, but it can't make it there with the house. We were trying to get an easement to go around it. From this lady, was not able to make that happen. So what we ended up doing, we started looking at, what do we do? How can we do it with what we've got? So we really looked hard at taking it down to Fort Morris Road. There was over 2,000 feet of pipe because of the roadside ditch was going to be really deep. We looked really hard at going back to Island's Highway and then going back down to crossing this back up there. That too had close to 2,000 feet. There was only a couple hundred feet different. This was actually shorter going to Island's Highway. But the amount of pipe we had, and then we would have an open cut across Island's Highway, which we were starting to look at well over, both ways, well over $100,000 worth of material alone. Did go back, we shot some more shots over here. I've talked to the Sunbury Company, Mr. Matt Fanning. He is open to an easement, and we're going to meet with him first part of next week, which will take care of this. This gentleman here is interested in getting rid of the water, so we're going to try to get an easement. We have a little bit of easement we need from him right there. And then Mr. Frank Polite, we're going to get Mr. Fanning to help us get a little bit of easement across Polite Street right there, so that we should be able to put in this little amount of pipe instead of a long way. Now, one thing that you need to know is it's not a super amount of grade difference to be able to drain that. This area back here is about a foot and a half lower than the bottom of the pipe. So when I go do this, to get cover over my pipe and make my piping and all work, this pipe will be a little bit oversized because I'm going to sink it down in the ground, and I'm looking at using the top part of the pipe as far as my capacity goes. So if you go out there and you look how deep I've got it, it's deep on purpose. But that'll work well, based on the hydraulics and how this thing needs to work to make the water flow with the small amount of grade difference I have there, I need the bigger pipe to make that work. So hopefully by the end of next week, or first part of the following week, I should have easements wrapped up on this, so then I can get Clinton to get pipes going and working on this.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Trent. Right here, what's the distance right there?
That's 80-something feet.
Okay, and that's actually, you're going down Trade Hill Road, right?
Yes, sir. What I'll do, this is pipe coming out of the road. I'll go 3, 270 feet down the road before I start the pipe. What'll start happening is, when I'm going this way, the roadway is going up, so my ditch was going to be getting deep. So I started the pipe here, so I don't have more than about a three-and-a-half-foot deep ditch. That way, I don't have a roadside obstacle or drivers running up and down the road. That's why I started piping here, plus that gets me my access across.
Now, when you turn on Fort Morris Road, what will your drop be when you turn on Fort Morris Road with the water?
This is not planned to go to Fort Morris Road.
You're going to come back?
Yeah, this is going to be a little short run. This is not Fort Morris Road. Fort Morris Road, and I've got grade to get all the way there, but I've got over $100,000 worth of material to make that work. And it's just a lot of things on Trade Hill Road that just, it doesn't make sense. And if I'm able to make these easements work with much less pipe, I can get this fixed and get the drainage working much quicker. Because if I have to put in 2,000 feet of pipe plus, then that's something that we've got to put out for bid, because that's going to be a little bit bigger than what Clinton can do.
Are you going to have any catch basins in it?
On this one, I'm going to have two.
Two catch basins?
Yeah, and there are two junction boxes.
Wow, okay.
Yeah, because I'm not really trying to take water in those, because all that dirt, all it would do is just fill up everything. And it's not, I mean, it's, I'm not doing it, all this is draining differently anyhow.
Okay. When do you expect to have this, your drawing completed? And your engineering for work completed on this?
Well, this is pretty much, I mean, I've got some other stuff that is not in this drawing for presentation tonight. We're pretty much done. So the bulk of it now is making sure I have easements from everybody. And once I have the easements in, I have everything Clinton needs to put this in the ground.
And just for the rest of the board members, kind of just tap on it, what contributed to this issue?
So it appears that this used to flow through this property and right in here. The exact path, don't know. But as this house got developed over the years and the dirt got pushed around in here, the low area is kind of filled up, so it probably only affected it about eight to 12 inches. But that eight to 12 inches created a, what, a seven or eight acre lake in people's yards back down here on the other side of Trade Hill Road. So our goal is to let the water get out to the bottom of this ditch. Then that should, then whoever is working back here, if they can get their water to our roadside ditch, they can eliminate their drainages.
What effect is this going to have on Stevens Road?
This one won't hurt Stevens.
This one won't have no effect on Stevens Road?
No, sir. It won't. So we do have, the Road Department is looking at trying to get some easements to resolve some issues on Stevens Road. Some of the issues down at the far end of Stevens Road where the old barrel pit is, it's just so low back there, there's not anything to really to help what's happening off of our right-of-way. I want to help, but I don't have anything to really help the area that's outside of our right-of-way. Because if you look at the original contours before all that was developed, that water is doing exactly what that contour said from before. And it's just, it's about the same elevation as the swamp next to it. So it's not going to go. So we need to provide as much benefit as we can to get rid of water out there, but it's not going to completely eliminate their issues.
Oh, Dave.
On the end of Stevens Road. Now, back up near where the paving stops. We can fix some drainage up there, as long as we have some easements to go through some property lines there, and we can help that scenario. But I know that Chris is working on some easements sometime. So I don't know, I hadn't talked to Chris about what the status is on maybe, but I'll find out for you.
Okay. Trent, educate me if you will, please. So by someone purchasing and or developing that property and improving it to build a house, their improvement affected the drainage. So as a county, we have no influence over that? Because that could happen anywhere and everywhere, especially in the, in the county where.
So, you know, when we have, we do regulate commercial site plans, and we regulate subdivisions and how that happens. So we're able to take care of it when we have those scenarios. And this is an old parcel that somebody just kind of built and grew over the years, and they did it within the confines of what they're allowed to do on their property.
I understand.
And then it does kind of become a civil suit, you know, because you're affecting properties between properties. You could go that route to some extent, but I'd have to get Kelly to talk about that a little more, because that's why he's an attorney.
Mr. Chair, it actually affected the homeowners that's there also, you know, where they located the house at.
Yeah. Yeah.
It did. And it didn't show up, because, you know, we haven't been this wet for a really long time.
Yeah.
And so all the storms we had, just kind of like, any and every drainage problem we had reared its head the last couple of months.
Yeah. You know, you talk civil suit, but you know, when these kind of things happen, then it's 1-800-Commissioner Stevens, or 1-800-Commissioner Thrift. Fix my problem, but it's really not a problem that the county caused.
Yeah.
And you're right, we do have jurisdictional, more so authority when it comes to subdivision, but when it comes to individual lots, property being developed, and if they meet the basic requirements, then.
That's right, they do.
Yeah, but you could very well adversely affect your neighbor, or neighbors in this effect.
And if you're just standing out there looking at his lot and focused on him individually, you're not going to recognize that that little bit of change is going to affect all these people.
How do you explain that to the neighbor who's been affected? They're going to, they want the county to come in overnight.
You're exactly right.
Make a fix. So it's a tough spot for us as commissioners.
It is.
I will say that these who were affected, they were real.
They were cautious.
They were real patient.
Everybody out there was really nice to work with.
Matter of fact, they had to put crates outside to walk on to get out their house, but they were still, they were patient.
Yeah.
Yeah, I went out there today during the deluge, and it's not as big as it was, but they're still ponding in their backyards.
He told me they're getting, they're developing kind of PTSD when it rains now.
They probably are, because it was coming down cats and dogs this morning.
Yeah. Okay.
It came down.
Well, let's look at that with, I don't, I'm not trying to recommend anybody to sue anybody, you know.
No.
But man, there ought to be something. I feel so helpless, you know.
I understand.
Yeah.
I really do. But yeah, that does become more of a question.
I want to protect the landowner, but I also want to protect the neighbors too, and of course, the county. So all of us deserve protection, but.
Yes, sir.
But let's look at it, at least look at it.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Brown. Trent. What's the, what's going to be the rough estimate cost of this project?
This one's not horrible.
What was that?
This one is not horrible. The other two options were horrible. Yeah, I read that in the notes.
It's in our drainage budget, Mr. Brown?
Right, that's what I was.
Yeah, this was, this will treat our drainage budget much nicer.
I think, yes, sir, I think there was money in District 1.
Okay.
What, what, what was that? Let me go out here and get my hair in there.
Can I get a motion in a second?
Yeah, there was some odd drainage fund money that.
Yeah. Drainage fund money is there.
The materials, everything.
There's one other one coming your way, Commissioner Stevens, I got to work on.
Yeah, I mean.
Mr. Chairman, now you can handle some of these things yourself.
Is that the one we're talking about? Is that one in the city of Westboro, or that's in the county? The one we talked about at the funeral down there, when we approached by the citizen? Is that one in the city or is it in the county? With the same kind of thing, you know, where all this torrential rain is, is called.
Ballparking is going to be around $30,000.
Okay, all right.
Okay.
All right.
So it's a lot less.
Okay.
And I'm hoping I'm ballparking high right now.
Now, Mr. Chair, I apologize. I know you probably didn't, you don't have a slide on Island's Highway.
That's.
Industrial. But I went down to date, could I, Mr. Brown, Clint, could you pull up that for me just a minute, please? I took a quick picture of, is that a fire hydrant right there? Is that going to be a drain or a fire plug right there?
Water, I think it's a water cutoff valve.
A water?
That's a water valve. So what they do, let me get back over here in here. So this is in the driveway, it's got to be in driveway for HMI. Is that where you saw that?
Right, because right.
So that's what that looks like.
Right.
So when they poured the concrete for the driveway, they boxed out where the valve is for the water main. And so what'll happen is that valve, the metal part that's round, is kind of like a screw. So when they get everything, all the concrete poured around it, they come in and then screw it down until it gets to the level where it's level across the concrete.
Okay.
And then they'll come back, take those boards out, and they'll pour concrete powder back in there so that it becomes like solid concrete. That way, if you have cracks or anything from that, you can see how they have joints right there and joints right over here. They've got the crack control going on on this, so this looks like it's the correct way to do that.
Okay.
So if I was expecting somebody, and this is some thick concrete.
Okay.
I would expect it to be done this way.
Okay.
Sorry.
I just want you to know I made my rounds.
There you go. Always, you're welcome to come and ask me, I'll kind of show you.
Now, also, coming out of that first roadway coming from, by the school, is that, I know we talked about it, I can't recall. Are we going to have a solid road, Mr. Chairman, all the way out?
Yes.
Or it's going to be certain footage, then come back out to the two lane, then do it again? Or it's going to be a solid? Mr. Chairman, you know what I'm talking about?
I'm trying to follow you.
When we come out the first road.
So there's a road, you've got two driveways. One is closer to the school.
Right.
It's going to look like a driveway, and it's going to go on back to where HMI building is in the back.
Right.
And it actually connects to the HMI parking lot.
Okay.
Connects all the way back to this other one.
Okay. Let's stay out on, let's stay out on Island's Highway.
On Island's Highway.
Let's stay out on Island's Highway.
You can come back, and it's sitting off the road a little bit now. But what's going to happen is Island's Highway is going to get modified, so there's going to be a left turn lane at both driveways.
Okay.
So that road is going to get about six feet wider both ways.
Okay.
So as you're coming down the road, if you're coming and going all the way to the coast, you're going to just kind of veer to the right, go by the turn lane, and then you'll be back in the lane and just kind of move over. Same way coming back, because there'll be a queuing line to turn left into this site at both driveways.
So it will be a three, I guess to sum it up real, it will be a three-lane road all the way from the first?
No, no, not from.
Not way, so you're going.
You got, you got a three-lane section for the first one.
Stop.
You got a three-lane section for, yeah, a stop.
And go back to another three-lane.
Yeah, because it's like 3,300 feet between them, which is three-quarters of a mile between the two driveways. So what, one of the safety improvements we're looking at doing though is making a passing lane on the lane going west back into town, so that if somebody's pulling out, traffic's going slow, that you have a way to get around them. So we're trying to work on some of that now.
Okay. Well, I guess one more question. Are we looking to do a speed reduction in that area, or are we going to leave it like it is?
Well, I'll put it to you this way. Looking at the speed counts and some of the traffic counts that I've seen out there, the 85 percentile speed is greater than 55 now. And if we do a speed reduction, we can do a speed reduction for safety for these driveways, but we would have to get it approved by DOT. And we stand a fair chance of getting the speed reduction that we would like. I'm not going to say good, but I think we stand a fair chance of getting it. To drop it down to 55. Because they're going to see the 85 percentile speed being up more than 55, and, you know, because already 85% of the people driving through there are speeders. There's a whole process you have to go through.
Well, it should.
We stand a good chance, if we want to, if we want to put in the DOT to slow that speed down through there, we can put in to slow the speed down, and if we can't get permission to do that, if that's what you would like me to do, I'll be glad to do it.
My belief is this, this is at a last-minute dash. All of this should have been thought about, you know, when this project came up on the table at the Industrial Authority.
Okay.
All right, Kelly, you done, sir? Can we go back to?
Right now.
Yeah, I'm just writing this down. Okay, all right, so I'll skip back to where I was. We talked about Trade Hill Road Drainage, Cantillon Road, and I said Cantillon Road, it's actually Hoover Road. And there's a development, and I left Commissioner Thrift to copy what we were looking at. Island's Highway Box Culvert, we've been addressing some comments that FEMA is looking forward, they're trying to process a grant for us to replace that box culvert. Dorchester Village Road easements, the Deventorfs are interested in providing us some easements that will help our drainage along Dorchester Village Road. So we're trying to strike while the iron's hot, that they want to let us have some easements, so I'm trying to get those pulled together for us.
Okay.
Tunde Way Drainage, that's one of the roads in Habersham Plantation. So a gentleman in one of the original phases, not Phase 2 or 3, that's under development. He's filling in the roadside ditch, parking a bunch of equipment, digging in the Georgia, the Atlanta Gaslight Easement. And I think that billing and licenses actually has a court date with him over some of the things he's doing. So we're pretty soon going to have to send the Road Department out there to reestablish some of the drainage in the roadside ditches, because he's basically filled it in, and all the water's sitting in the roadway. So, which is not good for anybody that's living there, anybody that's going to live in there.
Trent, he just filled it in with dirt? He just put dirt in it?
Blew it in with dirt. Even paved part of his concrete driveway over the top of the post. Sometimes he's, I don't understand. But anyhow. Mr. Zekman is kind of leading the way on that one, because he is the one that has the enforcement mechanism, but I've been trying to help him with what we need to do on that. Sheriff's Department of Fire and Range, we're looking at for a solution. Their firing range has really been flooding as well. This is not going to be a really easy fix, but I think we've got some ways that we can get rid of some water over toward the old airport. Lexwell Drive, Miss Linda Martin's property there, we have some drainage issues, and our, we have an easement through there, and our grading has been pushing the width of the road a little wider than the easement. So we're trying to work with the Road Department to get that tongue back down and narrowed back to the width of the easement.
How wide is it supposed to be?
Sorry?
How wide? What is the width of it, do you recall, initially?
Yeah, it's like 20 feet. It's, we don't have a real big easement through there.
It was just a utility easement, that's what it started off as.
It's just 20 feet, and we're like 23 or 24 feet wide now. And it's just kind of, as we've been pushing the mud out, it just gets a little wider. So we're working on trying to get that resolved. It is something that's resolvable.
Okay.
Well, let me say, portions of it are resolvable. There's some that may not ever get resolved.
We'll let the chairman handle that.
I suppose I had a meeting, I was waiting on the meeting, Trent.
Yes, sir. I'm trying to get a few other things together before we try to leave.
All right, okay.
I'm trying not to get you too bogged down with that.
All right, sir. I appreciate it.
Sorry, I didn't mean that it was ugly, but I'm just trying to, there's a couple things we need to make sure of, take care of before you get.
And just got to put your armor on and go in.
Mm-hmm, that's right. And we did get some landfill closure costs that we do annually for Miss McLaughlin. The Trayport West EMS building, that's about ready to go out for bid. We have made a few changes to the Forest Main Route based on some comments from the LCDA. We did get our NRCS compliance with original sediment control, so we're going to need to go out there pretty soon. And somehow or another, we got to get out there and get this part cleared and filled under the wetland permit that we have that expires in March. There are some pretty significant, there's a suit by an Indian tribe against a core engineers that has stalled and stopped most wetland permits in the United States. And they're having to go back to 2015 rules and regulations. There are 270-something permits in our district alone that are affected by this suit. So if we don't do this and get this done under our current permit, we will lose this site. So we got to get it done by March. So just, when you see that kind of coming through, it may come through with just clearing and grubbing or something to get some dirt on there. Becky Street and Olive Street intersection improvements, it will start Monday. So I wanted to talk to you about the little side street on Becky Street. We may want to go about another 10 feet from what we had designed.
The side, the side street off Beckett?
Yes, well, Keith was, Keith met with Vaughn this morning about it, and he came back and asked me. And I have not had an opportunity to go look at it.
Keith Jenkins?
Keith, no, Keith Causeway, my inspector chief. So what I need to do is get with you on it and look at it.
What side street off Beckett? I don't, Beckett goes from 84.
You know, we, it's, it's Becky, we got Becky and then the little road that tease into it, because we're doing the intersection, and I think we're going a little bit further on this street, and I can't remember the name of that street.
Beckett is a straight street from 84 to the back of the school?
Yes, that's right. But then we're doing a little part that's in the intersection, is where we got part of the work, and it's right there. Yeah, I'll get with you and show you. So he asked me this afternoon, so I just need to make sure that you and I talk about that before they get started.
When you want to go out there?
You want to go Friday afternoon?
Fri, no, 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 not Friday afternoon. No, no, not Friday afternoon.
Yeah, but Trent.
I'll catch up with you.
If it was him and Eddie together, it would be Friday.
No, on Fridays, I go down to Marion's District. And then. And in the afternoon, I go home and take a nap.
You gonna see what roads you can pave so he can take over?
Yeah, no, no, I, I'm just, I can't, um, Becky is from eighty-four, right there by the real estate place, all the way down to the double gate at the school, it's a straight shot, there is no road off of Becky. There's some driveway ramps, but there's no road.
Let me pull the plant, the drawings out, and I'll show you tomorrow what I'm talking about, and make sure that we're all on the same sheet.
But they gonna do some work, uh, they start this week.
Yes, because he was asking me this afternoon, and I was kind of listening and trying to put it together in my mind, and-
No, when you, when you say Keith, I thought you was talking about Keith Jenkins, because that's his district, and I was gonna say, he can't talk unless he breaks his wallet out.
No, no Keith works for me, Keith Causeway.
All right.
Keith's my little drill sergeant, he, he holds them to it, I'm telling you. Walterville Roads, they talked to Larry again yesterday, and I sent the letter to him back in April. Asked me to send it to him again, we sent it to Michana this morning, and she said as soon as he signs it, he'll get it back over to us, that way we can start taking some more action on it.
Yeah, I talked with Larry a little bit yesterday, they got a lot of easement, um, concerns out there.
They do. Yeah, I spoke to the mayor yesterday as well.
Yeah, yeah.
So, uh-
Entire city is, uh, need, in need-
Easement issues.
Yeah.
Anywhere easements need to be addressed out there.
Okay.
It is, yeah, we're looking up some stuff for him on the drainage there along Rivers Road.
Yeah.
So, he and I and Clinton met out there yesterday morning.
Yeah, he, he told me, good.
Yeah.
All right, Middle Park Fire Station, we've made all the revisions, sent them back to the architect, and he is trying to put together the hundred percent set of plans, uh, so everybody can get those turned back out. The Middle Park Recreation Improvements, so you got a, a letter from me and a copy of the proposals that we're proposing. So, we got two bids, one from Lavender and Associates Incorporated, and another one from Basin Company. Not had any experience with Basin Company. The low bidder was Lavender and Associates in the amount of one million, four hundred and three thousand, five hundred and twenty-five dollars even. And, and kind of looking through that, we were well more than four hundred dollars a square foot on that building, far more than twice what we paid for that same building in, uh, Gil Park. Uh, and they are, Lavender Associates is more of a builder, builder, and so all the site work, which is more than, almost a million dollars of the contract, is something that they don't do. So, what we are recommending, and Mr. Brown and I talked about this at length, uh, we, we think we probably need to reject these bids, maybe break it up into something smaller and try to, uh, spend our money a little more wisely, or see if we can get better prices somehow or another, step at a time. So, as far as this proposal goes, uh, I would like to ask that the Board of Commissioners reject these bids.
Oh, that's easy.
All right, Chair and Attorney Motion?
Some movements, Chair.
Motion second, we reject the bids as proposed by Lavender and Basin, and we'll start all over again, any further discussion?
Yes, sir.
All in favor, raise your right hand, please. Bids are rejected, Sergeant.
Thank you, sir.
Take a fresh start.
Okay, Yeoman's Road is the next one, they got most of the asphalt down, they are, um, can you go to, I got a couple pictures, went out there, they were working on the ditches and the shoulders, and they did hit a couple of, they nicked the, um, edges of pavement in two locations. They will fix it, yeah, I'm sorry that picture turned sideways, but you can see how the motor grader kind of started scraping the top of the asphalt, and then it broke off some asphalt in that area. And then there's one more, and both of these are closer to the Bluff Creek end, not the Marina end, um, that's the other one, so, you know, they're sizable, but they're very fixable, um, they're gonna be back out there toward the end of next week. At the very end of the project, we have some, uh, curb and gutter that, uh, needed to be replaced, um, and what they were doing, plus a little bit further down, uh, Yeoman's Road that was, that has settled over the years from the other project that we did. I think we paved Yeoman's Road, that part of Yeoman's Road around two thousand and one, two timeframe, and, um, so we're gonna fix that, Clinton has asked us to fix that, and then they'll come back, fix these two places, finish up the asphalt, because if you get to the end of this road, there's about a seventy-five to a hundred-foot stretch that doesn't have any asphalt on it, and then I stopped them there on purpose because that's where the curb and gutter needs to be fixed, and I didn't want them to put the asphalt down and then try to match the curb and gutter to the asphalt, it just looked terrible. So, they're gonna come back and fix that, so they'll start that at the end of next week, um, and they should be able to get on, out of there after that's done. You know, each time it rains out there, the sandy soil out there, it just, erosion is eating them up, but they are working on these, they're aware of these issues, and, uh, they are gonna be fixing these issues.
Mr. Chair?
At their cost, not ours.
Sure.
How thick is that asphalt supposed to be?
So, it is an inch and a half thick everywhere. Actually, our asphalt over the whole road is probably a little fat, um-
It looked mighty thin when I was out there, they-
So, there are some places that, if you look, it does look thin, but if you go back and look, you'll see where the motor grader skimmed part of the asphalt off the top of it, and so the asphalt was scratched off the top before you get to it, but we went back and everywhere, uh, go back one picture, I think I can show you a little bit better. That picture doesn't shoot as well.
Oh, you could pull up the-
So, like, see how the asphalt is, looks funny right there?
Maybe he was working on-
It looks mighty.
Yeah, that looks thin there, and that's thin because that motor grader blade, when he is-
Our motor grader?
No, no, their motor grader.
Oh.
But when they're dressing the, when, they use motor graders to dress the shoulders and dress the ditches.
Okay.
And so when that motor grader got a little too deep, he was skimming the top of the asphalt off, and then it got deep enough that he pulled up asphalt. So, if you try to measure the thickness of the asphalt right there, it's not an inch and a half. But if you measure right here, it is, and if you measure it over here, it is. We measured it in several places, I, I, we had an experience years ago with Brights Lake Road, where the contractor was running heavy, one, on one side of the road, and then when he was running heavy-
Running light on the other side.
He got light on the other side of the road as he went by, and we ended up with a real issue with making him come back and re-overlay that, so, we're very cognizant of that, we look at that, we actually had that very conversation when they were putting down the asphalt, to make sure that they did not run short, especially on this edge. Now, another thing that we do as well, so that you know, on the very outside edge, we do roll that down just a little bit so that you don't have a little cliff to draw, drive off of if the shoulder washes. DOT's requiring that now, so that's kind of a new standard that we're doing, but, yeah, we, we, we check and make sure we got that thickness of that asphalt all along, so, you know, if you look here, it's not gonna show it, because it's got scraped off the top, but we did, Andy and I went out and we dug down everywhere to make sure we had an inch and a half.
That's what I looked at the other evening when I was out there, it, it looked very, looked very thin.
Yeah, and it is very thin right here, because he was, the motor grader blade was flipping the top of that asphalt off.
So, that means we gonna have a patch, two or three patches on a brand-new road.
There's gonna be a patch here, and then there'll be a patch down there, and, uh, we'll make sure to make it look right.
Now, what about your, uh, your catch bases down there? I, I, I call them catch bases, going on the, are they sealed real good around the, is the pipe sealed good around the pipe going in?
We've got a lot of silk fence around the ends, and we're plugging a lot of them right now to keep sediment in place, so that's why you have a lot of water around the outside of them. If there is something that is not sealed, um, it will be sealed before the job is over, because that is one of the things we do, is make sure that all the sealing is done. So, now, when we, when they do put them in, we do a lot of the sealing from the outside, so if you open it up, you're not gonna see sealing, because that concrete does much better in compression than it does in tension.
Right.
So, if you put the concrete patch on the outside, then the water's always pushing the kind, the-
Push, push, pressure against it.
You put it on the inside, then it's trying to push it off, so most of the, most of the sealing we do run down. So, you don't see it on the inside, but we do go through and we do check and make sure that has occurred before the project's over.
Well, the reason why I'm saying that, because we don't want the same problem like what we got on Lake Pomona Road.
Yeah.
You know, and, yes, for now, the road is giving in because it's washing out, the water's coming up to the box, and it's-
Yeah, we even-
Dirt around it, and then, and then you, your asphalt start caving in.
Yes, sir, we even started, um, wrapping all of our joints, so when we laid the pipe, we have a piece of fabric over each joint, so that if something happens with the seal and the bell and spigot, that the fabric helps keep the sand from washing in and creating a void, and, because a lot of times you don't see those for ten, fifteen years before something, all of a sudden, what's that little hole? And then you poke something through it, and then all of a sudden, there's this big cavern
Right.
underneath it, so-
So you had given me, and this Board of Commissioners, that this road is going to be what we are asking for and looking for?
Sure, it is, it is.
What about the sand in the box now, you gonna try to get that out, or you just let it wash out itself?
They'll get most of that out.
Okay.
So, but they won't get that out till, after they get more stabilization then, get more grass up. Right now, it's not impeding the flow, but as soon as the stabilization gets here a little bit better, um, they will have to get that out. We always get them to try to clean the pipes, I don't wanna give, you know, a product to the end of the guy, at the end of the road with a bunch of pipes that are half-full. We do get those cleaned up.
Okay.
Yes, sir. All right. Palm Drive and Point South Drive, um, we have those contracts back there, I don't know if Ms. Maria got you to sign those before the meeting or not, Mr. Love it.
Did.
But if we get, and get Mr. Brown to sign those, then we'll have all the contracts done, and, uh, we'll get a, a pre-construction conference going on that. So, on your Fleming Road, Eagle Road, and Honey Ridge Road Traffic Control, so they had actually taken some bids, uh, as part of their L-MIG to do some of this, so that's kind of what took some of this time. So, I think you saw today that, uh, Ryan set up some surveys- and some public hearing dates finally today. So, those are starting to crop their heads up, that they take bids, they open bids on it Tuesday night.
Okay, so, uh, are they gonna use their L-MIG funding? I mean-
Well, I'm, I'm with you there.
Be, because I'm-
So, you know, I, when I found out that they were doing the L-MIG funding, I was like, okay, that's not what I was expecting, and-
Oh, it's fine.
It, it, which is fine.
It's totally fine.
You know, what, what just may need to happen is, uh, you know, Justin and, uh, I and Mr. Howard may have to have a conversation.
Right, right, I mean, you know, uh, you know, just dealing with the whole process, and I understand that, you know, I'm on the county side, but my whole entire district is inside the city limits. So, I, I know we have to work well together to, to move, move the district forward.
Yes, sir.
I just need some more clarity on, uh, whenever I do wanna make improvements in my district, that, I guess the stipulations or whatever they have in place-
Oh, yes, sir, no, I, I was fully expecting that we were gonna be putting this together, and then when they told me they had it out for bid with their L-MIG projects, I was like, that's not what we're talking about at all.
Right. I, I, it, it's, it's just the whole process, you know, with, I, I just don't understand why would I have to do the same process?
That they're doing.
Yeah. It doesn't make sense.
I, I, I understand, and I understand your frustration.
But if they're gonna use their L-MIG money, just build them. We nip that in the bud quick.
All right, so, um, Lewis Frazier Road Water System Extension, we did the, the report. Now, one of the comments that came in the commission meeting, um, that, that was it, about what it would take to, uh, get water across, uh, the west side of the railroad tracks. Uh, this is, I'm, I'm kinda giving you a little bit of orientations, um, this is Highway eighty-four, this is the railroad, this is one ninety-six, um, the concrete plants, Brights Lake Road, McIntosh Lake Road, and McIntosh Lake. Excuse me. Our water system ends right here, um, about where they have all the asphalt millings piled up out there in that old lake, the old McIntosh Lake, if y'all remember. And so what we would end up doing was, uh, bringing a ten-inch line, crossing under the railroad here, and then extend it down. The yellow line is the City of Heinzel Service Delivery Area, so we'd have to stop there. We would bring in a two-inch line to service, um, houses down this little dirt road here, we would have an eight-inch line bring fire service and service to the houses down seals. There is a water system already on Brights Lake Road, it's owned by, I think it's PK Water Systems, I can't remember the, the exact owner, but it, we, when we paved Brights Lake Road, um, we ended up, uh, helping them by providing materials so that they can move their water line out from underneath our roadway. Their water system will not provide fire flows, and won't provide the system that we need, so, um, we can, one, either let it stay by itself, or either take it over and then put fire protection through there. Also, we can go down, uh, McIntosh Lake Road and come back and serve these houses in, um, McIntosh Lake. Now, this big piece right here, um, it was, uh, back in two thousand and nine, looked at being developed, uh, a PUD was, uh, applied for to develop that, um, and at that time, the county did not have a water system, and so they were gonna do their own water system with a, uh, land application system in the back, because there's a wetland that kind of cuts this back half off, uh, it's hard to get across, so it, they're, that's what was happening back in two thousand and nine. So, it's been sitting dormant, some of the pieces have been sold off to the neighbors across the front, um, but there are developers interested in this project again. Now, they are looking at it from the standpoint that it's outside the service delivery area from Liberty County. City of Heinzel has said that they don't want to extend the service delivery area out to this site back in two thousand and nine. I would anticipate that that sentiment is the same now. So, you could end up with several hundred additional home sites in this site that would provide potential customers for you in the future. But, but, you know, if, if the county provides water service in that area, then, uh, we're not providing sanitary sewer, so there would be basically, uh, a minimum of half-acre lots, because to meet the health department requirements, you've gotta have half-acre lots. So, to do what you see kind of in blue, oh, let me back up, there's a little trailer park right in here that I didn't include, because it's, you'd have to get easements, and I'm not sure how we want to handle the little trailer park there, but, um, we'd come back down here, um, to where the, uh, old site's old was, there's several houses back up in there, get fire protection there. By the time you do this, you're about three point three six million dollars to get across there. Also, if you start adding a little bit more down one ninety-six, then that adds to it as well. The, uh, current that we've got for Lewis Frazier is about nine hundred and sixty thousand dollars total, and so right now, with the grant funding, Mr. Brown has it set up about sixty, forty, uh, where sixty percent is the, uh, grant funds and forty percent are matching funds. If we were to use the same percentage with this project and the other project, that would use about, uh, one point seven million dollars of ARPA money to make the forty percent match. to make the forty percent match to do that, if we want to go this route. So, you know, I think at some point before, um, too long, we've got to have, uh, commitment from the commissioners, but, uh, just kind of introducing it tonight.
By the next meeting, we need to know whether you want to include this section in your application or not, because the application's got to be submitted.
What was that, Mr. Brown?
It's ready to go, um, absent this section, but if you wanted to include it, we, we, you know, we go back, obviously change the numbers, change the air, to change the number of households, which is easy to do, but I just don't have a lot of lead time to, you know, to, to make those changes. We, we need to know by the next meeting. The, the, and, and the number's exactly, so your total project cost without this section before that's in the application is nine thirty-five, seven eighty-one. The total project cost with this section would be four point two million. Uh, and we can send you these, uh, we just got these this afternoon. So as Mr. Long was saying, your, your original match that would come out of your local ARPA money would have been two forty-six, three twelve. On that nine thirty-five number, that match increases from two forty-six to roughly one point six million dollars. It would, you'd have to obligate out of your local ARPA funds.
And how much do we have in that local fund?
Well, your local fund, the total that you're getting is eleven million dollars through twenty, uh, twenty-six.
Mm-hmm.
So it's got, it's a, you know, that eleven million is what the committee's gonna work on.
Eleven point nine, right?
I'm sorry.
Eleven point nine.
I think it, yeah, it is eleven point nine.
Hey, that nine means something.
I, I understand.
Now.
Yeah, so, so again, you'd be going ahead and committing, you know, a pretty good sum of money to the project.
Now, that would take care. Going onto the way road.
Mm-hmm. Yes, sir.
Now, Trent, what did you say earlier about the yellow line right there? Is that, um?
This, this yellow line is the city of Hinesville.
City Limits, but since City of Hinesville furnishes water services to them, it's known as the City of Hinesville Water Service Delivery Area.
So is that on the right also?
Go ahead, go ahead.
It is.
Okay, the one on?
It runs almost to the high school on the other side of the road. And then you have to cross the road to catch one of those pieces over there.
How about down pat, this other end?
Down here, just.
Yes, uh-huh, is that?
That's our service.
That's our service.
That yellow line is our service?
Where does this stop? Where, where does Hinesville?
There stops over here on this side of the track.
There stops over here. That's theirs.
Oh, going back to the left.
So this area right here really is in no man's land right now.
Okay, okay.
So it's, we can provide service in there.
Well, that's the difference between that overwater lake district and the one, and Midway. Midway is providing service in the rural area with a two-inch line.
A lot of places, yes, sir.
Because the two-inch line starts by the Donchester Center, right in front of the Donchester, o- over by the, the brick house, Mr. The Vet House.
Mm-hmm.
So it starts the two-inch line, so all of those people are being serviced off of a two-inch line.
Now, you know, we've got an eight-inch line across the street down eighty-four. It's about the same location.
Where is that?
Uh, we started down at the entrance to Hunter's Ridge, and it goes almost in front of the museum on the other side of the road. We installed that about three or four years ago.
Because if you.
City of Midway did.
Okay, because if you remember, when we started off with the water system, we wanted to connect with Midway and just let the, let a valve be the divider, so if anyone has a problem, they could just
Yes.
Open the valve, but that did not happen.
Yes, sir. You're exactly right, and the main thing here is, you know, if you ever end up connecting, I've got this stubbed out to the edge where the service delivery area is. It's about one parcel beyond where my last customer would be, but, you know, needed to make that connection, we could.
Actually, our last customer would actually be Mr. Smith, I think.
The, Trent.
This would be like Ward, no, uh, this is Bus Barn, and this Ward's, I think that's Ward's Autobody, or whatever it is now.
Mm-hmm, okay. The private water system, would those patrons have the option of connecting with this?
So, so what, what we wanted to do, and I didn't end the weeds, what we wanted to do was first to see what the cost was to run those lines.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and I asked Trent to count every possible possibility. So, so whether they did or not would be up to the board, probably, probably wouldn't force those people on a private water system to reroute all over. But at least with the ARPA funds, unlike CDBG funds, you don't have to guarantee a number of towns. And so basically, we'd provide the line out there in the future when the service was bad, they could tie on.
Okay.
The, the line would be out there to provide service to this undevelopment track.
Mm-hmm.
And not with the same strings that a CDBG grant has on it. You hadn't got to prove how many customers are gonna hook on right now, but you'd be able to provide the service at the time, if that's what y'all want to do.
So, so, so actually, we'll be providing fire protection, but they don't have to take the public water system itself.
Unless you decide that.
Unless you decide not to put that line in.
Well, or, no, unless you decide that you want to go ahead and force them to come off of, but I'm not advocating that.
Right, right. I, I'm, I'm just saying.
No, no, right, right, right.
It, it could go that way. They could get fire protection.
Correct.
Uh, but not have the public water, drinking water.
Right.
Yes.
So, so you're asking?
So basically, it's, it's a ten thousand foot view.
Yeah.
From the last meeting real quickly, because of the grant application having to go in, as to whether you just want to consider it, but it's not.
What's, what's, what's our timeline?
We just need to know by the next meeting.
Two weeks?
Three weeks.
Right.
So really.
And, and the, really the main thing is.
How much?
Do you want to up your potential commitment?
From two hundred thousand to?
Two hundred thousand to, you know.
One point two.
Ru- roughly one point six million.
One point six million.
Your local ARPA money.
Would that keep our rate the same, or would the rate go down because you have more customers? Which one?
You're way ahead now. So I, with that number of customers, if it didn't go down immediately, it would eventually go down. And again, it goes back to whether you want to ask folks or mandate them to tie on to the service that have existing line.
So we got some legwork to do.
Well, I think the fir- the first thing is, the grant's not assured, okay? And so do you want to go ahead and try to go for the grant and see if they will fund the grant, and then make those decisions down the line, right?
Okay.
We don't, we don't have the system yet, so it's, that's, that's in the operation.
All right, this is a, um, serious decision.
Well, it's a.
Certainly, you could.
It's a heavy decision.
It's a heavy, that's another word for it. Certainly, you could benefit a lot of people, um, with the water service, and this is one of the allowable's for the ARPA funds, so that's what, uh, Commissioner Thrift, I missed the last meeting, that's kind of where we are with that, so I, I, I hear Commissioner Gillett in my ear, and I, what's gonna change between tonight and two weeks from now, as to whether we maybe want to support the extension of the water from other than up in the amount of funds we use, the two hundred versus the, uh, million dollar number, so that's the. Um, and, and do we hurt anything by doing that?
I mean, we.
But once again, if this is one of the allowable's, that certainly gives it some brownie points, so. But that decision, Commissioner, that lies before us, and we can certainly sleep on it. But at the next meeting, need to be ready to, to take action on it.
Yeah.
Uh, Mr. Chair, just, just, uh, one quick question. Uh, you know me, looking in the future, right?
Yes, sir.
And Trent, you were saying that potential, how many customers could probably tie in on this particular project? Several hundred, right? I'm, I'm just.
But so, when we did this before, we were planning on water and sewer, and we were gonna get seven or eight hundred homes. But that's gonna be a much denser count, because you don't have to have a half acre for each lot. When I have to start getting a half acre each lot, I only get a density of about one and a half per acre.
I'm, I'm with you, and that's where I'm going. And you following me right down that hole? I'm glad. So, that, that's, I guess that's what I'm looking at as well, too. You know, uh, if, if we're looking at the water system, correct? And, and we're expanding the water systems, and we're looking at new potential growth, uh, wouldn't it be beneficial also to, to address the, the sewer as well?
That is, uh, something that would be very beneficial for our citizens in that area, because we do have such poor soils.
Right.
Um, now.
I'm not trying to take the septic tank guy out of business. My, my grandfather was in the septic tank business for many years.
I don't take that at all.
Right, but I'm, I'm just looking at growth, and when, whenever you're talking about strategic growth.
This is exactly how sewer systems get born.
Right.
So, uh, yes, sir. We need to look at it.
So, so you're talking about then, an increased commitment of ARPA funds?
Well, there, there's not time to look at it.
Yeah, that's.
No, 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 right.
You won't be able to make that.
Future.
Make some plans to.
Right.
Yeah, we need.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I was even thinking about, uh. Yeah, that was my campaign slogan, focus on the future, so I, I'm, I'm just trying to. Right, so I'm just trying to stay on, on that route.
I was even thinking about the potential of the, uh, lower ISO ratings for some people.
Yes.
The water.
Yeah.
The water.
Right.
Another benefit.
But even, even with that, you know, with ISO.
Yeah, we can start looking at the sewer. I mean, yeah, that's a, that's a planning strategy that involves, you know, like acquisition and sprayfield design and that type of system.
Okay.
Some of that, but it's time.
Okay.
That needs to be on your planning.
Um, if we're gonna build a house, man, let's, let's, let's build a house. That's the only thing I'm saying.
Well, we're gonna do the infrastructure, let's work at it.
Build the.
Do it right.
Do it right.
Do it right.
It, it takes, it takes a while to develop a disposal method for your sewer.
Right.
Sewers, right.
That's kind of one of the first things to look at is, all right, where do we want to hit and how are we gonna dispose of it?
Right.
And once we get those items figured out, we can start moving.
And I'm, I'm just thinking about, uh, you know, potential growth, uh, new people coming into the area. Everyone's not familiar with septic tanks. You know, that's, you know, people from other places aren't used to. And what I'm saying is, you know, if, if we could have both of those together, then that'd be beneficial.
That would be very good for the citizens in that area, because those soil types are low-percolating soils. So that's why you ride around, you see so many mounds in everybody's yard.
Right.
Yeah.
High groundwater, low-perking soils, so this would be something to be very beneficial to the citizens.
As long, I'll, I'll dock it, and Mr. Chair, if that's all right for the next meeting.
Yes, sir. Please, please submit any other questions to Mr. Brown or Mr. Long between now and then, so try to get those questions answered.
So we'll be ready to make a decision next meeting?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Making that one tonight.
Okay, so I think the last thing on my, I think I've talked about everything except for Gum Branch Convenience Center. And I gave, uh, Mr. Thrift has a kind of up-to-date where we are. We should be finished with those pretty shortly and be able to put that out for bid. Um, so that's getting ready to roll.
Are you about ready? You said you were about ready to put it out for bid?
Probably.
Like next meeting?
Probably the end of the ne- before next meeting, I'll definitely be there.
Okay. Bid will come before us. I'll look at this and give you a call if I have any questions.
Yes, ma'am, please do. Now, it's not a hundred percent, but it's got the.
This is.
It's got basically what we're trying to do.
Okay.
Okay. That was an hour's worth of information.
I was, I was checking, I was getting rid of the time, everybody.
So, I don't know, I don't know if y'all want to talk to me anymore or not.
No, Trent, I, I, I do have one question. Um.
That's the lumber.
Back to, um, Becker Street, the side street that you're talking about, that, that's Seminole now, and, and just to back up a little bit, it's the Becker Street project, but it's the intersection that, where we got the, where we need the, the paving done. I mean, it's.
Yes, that's right.
Yeah, okay. So that, you know, when you were saying, what, it's a side street. It's, it's the intersection of Becky and Seminole, just like on Olive, you know, you got it listed as the Olive Street project, but it's Olive and Stafford, it's Olive and Cheridale. You know, where, where the work is going to be done. Olive is the name, just like Becky is the name.
Yes, sir, and it's just that little, that intersection that we're doing.
Yeah, yeah, okay, and the, the intersection is Seminole, I mean. Okay, yeah, go ahead. Yeah, yeah, go ahead. Yeah.
Because we just, you know, over the time since we've been doing this.
Right.
With the wet soils, it's been failing a little bit more.
Right, right, yeah, okay, yeah, that's.
We need to go a little bit more.
Yeah.
But call me. I'd still love to ride out with you and talk to you about it.
On Friday.
On Friday.
Not on a Friday afternoon, we can pull that off, but, um.
And Trent, you, you used some mighty fine pu- paper, too.
I'm glad you like it.
This is.
That's good money.
This is top-notch paper.
Well, I tell you, uh, we were having so much trouble with the other paper and maintenance and downtime on the copy machines.
You're talking about like the paper we use?
Yeah, and, and so I started buying the little bit higher grade paper.
Uh-huh.
And my maintenance on my copy machine almost quit.
Wow. Duly noted.
All right, so thank you, sir.
And, and remember, I have a really high dollar, high-end eight hundred pound.
All right, Trent, Trent, I'm trying to be, I'm trying to recoup some time. Trying to recoup some time, yes, sir.
Trent, Mr. Long. Yeah, might ask him if he could just stick around a little bit longer for a I T M H.
Okay. All right. Do that, Trent. Okay. All right, let's hear now from United Way, it's Brian Grant and.
Right.
Company. Good to see the homegirl back home.
And I am, uh, not just back home for this meeting, but, uh, on September third, after over thirty-five years, uh, somewhere else, I am literally, again, a resident of Liberty County.
Welcome home, welcome home.
Which I'm excited about, too. Thank you so much for that.
Y'all may remember her dad was Dr. Grant, who was a ophthalmologist.
Ophthalmist, yes, yes.
Ophthalmist, excuse me, for many years here in Liberty County.
And I, I grew up in Fleming most of my time, uh, with my, my stepfather was Ed Haymans.
Mm-hmm.
So, um, I was born here at Liberty Regional when it was on the highway. Um, and, uh, Bacon Primary, Hines Shaw Elementary, Hinesville Middle School.
You made the rounds.
And then Bradwell, of course. In fact, it still is a little odd to me sometimes that there's a second high school. So I have to come up with the times. I'm gonna have to, uh, to get used to that. It is, uh, an honor, uh, to be here with all of you, Chairman Lovett, esteemed commissioners, County Manager Brown, thank you so much for the opportunity. Um, I graduated from Bradwell and, 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 and left. Um, I worked in economic development for over twenty years, where I was the COO of the Savannah Economic Development Authority. And so that presentation we just heard was fascinating to me, and I've been passing the projects, uh, off Island Highway, and, and I'm really thrilled to see the growth that, uh, you guys are shepherding in Liberty County, so thank you. And from a United Way perspective, after nearly twenty years with the Savannah Economic Development Authority, in February of two thousand twenty, I joined the United Way as president and CEO. That was just about six weeks before the whole world changed. So, uh, my learning curve, which I had anyway, really steepened quite a lot. Uh, the very first thing that we did was create a COVID nineteen Rapid Response Fund in March of two thousand twenty. We knew, and we thought it would be a short time, but we knew that we were going to have to help people stay safely housed when our calls to our two-one-one call center, our information referral center went sky-high. And, uh, they, they doubled, they tripled, they quadrupled. We were taking thousands of calls from people who needed help in Liberty County, in Bryan County, in Effingham County, and in Chatham. So we thought we would begin by trying to raise money, having the community support the community. Um, and we thought if we hit two hundred thousand dollars, we'd be doing amazingly well. And I was so amazed and, and appreciative to, to see that our community, our four-county region raised six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Every single dime of it going to help residents of our community. So, um, it has, uh, been quite an amazing experience. And as we stand here today, I want to, on behalf of our team, um, our Liberty County office, we want to thank you, Liberty County Board of Commissioners, for your loyal commitment to the United Way. The United Way has been something you guys have continued to do year after year, and we're sincerely grateful for your leadership and your example in this community in particular. So thank you very much for continuing to do that, and I want to share a little bit about what your investment does and the work that we do, how your money helps our communities. If you don't know, the mission of the United Way is to improve lives. That aligns, I think, very well with the work of, uh, the, your work every single day. What you guys are doing here is to improve the lives of people in our county. And United Way's goal is to do the same thing. We do that three ways, and this is one of the things I didn't, I'm not sure I even understood when I started at United Way. We make grants to nonprofit organizations that are on the front lines of our communities every single day. So we, the community raises money through the United Way, and then through a volunteer-driven process, we invest those funds into nonprofit organizations. We're currently funding eighty-nine programs at fifty-four nonprofit agencies across our four-county region. And that is everything from making sure seniors have hot meals to funding after-school and summers, you know, summer programs for children. And that is everything from making sure seniors have hot meals to funding after-school and summer, you know, summer programs for children. Safe developmental programs for children. We also fill in where there are gaps with direct services. And frankly, in our, uh, in the counties, in Liberty, in Bryan, and Effingham, there's much more direct service. There's much more interaction with people because there are fewer nonprofits doing the work. So United Way does a lot of that work more directly than we have to do in Chatham County because there are so many nonprofits. And through the pandemic, the gaps were deep and wide. And that COVID nineteen rapid response fund that I just described to you was one of the ways that we helped to fill that gap for the people of our region. Lastly, we promote volunteerism and connect volunteers to needs in all four counties. Whether it's a corporate interest, whether it's a nonprofit that needs help, whether it's a, a grandmother who needs a ramp built. Those are the kinds of things that we're working on all the time. Our two-one-one call center has done things like, there was a gentleman who, uh, who had a job for ten years. He was, uh, had some developmental delays, but had a productive life and a good job. But because he was, um, he had a bedbug infestation, the school system had to ask him to leave the school until that could be solved. There was nobody to help him. There was a gap. And that gap in, in our safety net could have left him without a job. So our two-one-one call center director spent six weeks helping him to understand what needed to happen in order to deal with that problem. Secured and negotiated with, uh, cleaners to clean his house and exterminators to handle the problem so that he could be back in his job within about eight weeks. And he didn't lose his job. That's one example of thousands of lives in all kinds of circumstances. In twenty twenty, which was an extreme year, the United Way, through all of our program services and our direct services in this county, helped to improve the lives of two hundred and seven thousand nine hundred and forty-eight people, which is the most in our history. We conducted over this past year a, a strategic plan that I will make sure we get some copies to you, uh, to the county manager to share with you all. Four hundred people across our four county region were involved in that strategic plan, and there were two basic things. I'm not gonna go into the twelve or fourteen pages, but two basic things we learned. One of the things we heard was there was no replacement for the United Way's investment in the safety net. Those basic things, food and, and shelter, those basic things that keep people from falling through the cracks. There was no replacement in our community, so we had to recommit ourselves to that. So first and foremost, in our strategic plan, we are committed to that safety net. Second, we, what continued to come up over and over again was upward mobility. How do we help people remove barriers to economic progress? So the, in addition, we are going to be working to advance four bold goals in these areas that I think are critically important for quality of life and upward mobility. Quality affordable childcare, ready resilient workforce, financially empowered families, safe and stable housing. We are going to be over this next year, we're working with experts in each of those areas, subject matter experts, to determine exactly what role United Way should play. And, and frankly, we will be seeking partners in those spaces, uh, to, so that we can collaboratively and collectively solve the problems of our communities that are related to these issues. So what you're interested in, what you're specifically interested in is Liberty County impact and the specific things. I'd like to introduce, if you don't already know, Kristin Hopkins-Graham, who is our area director in our Liberty County office. And she's gonna share with you just a little bit about what these numbers mean here.
Thank you. Hello, I'm pleased to be here today, um, to tell you about the direct impact that United Way uses the dollars from the coastal empire to affect Liberty County. Um, so we have two ways. The first way is our direct service center, which I do want to, for just informational purposes, we have relocated from Fairhope over to Olive Street. We're at three oh one Olive Street now, just so you guys are aware of that. But, um, in our direct service center, we have a lot of programs, um, that we, uh, provide services to the community through. And most of those are centered around crisis management and intervention, helping families as they're going through the crisis. From bare minimum, um, necessities like food, hygiene items, things like that. We have the community resource closet and pantry, which we have one at our office that we service direct to the community, as well as we have several set up through the schools. Um, so that students are able to get it directly from their school counselors or nurses. Um, we also have, of course, our, last year because of COVID, we had the rapid response fund where we helped with utility and rental assistance for those that were affected by COVID, either by loss of job, um, they were out due to contracting COVID. So, um, we helped a lot of families there as well. We have the Landings Military Relief Fund, which provides, um, emergency assistance to, in, to active duty military. And that covers a wide range of, um, emergency assistance from, it can be rental, it can be car payments, it can be insure, it can be, it, it has an open range of eligibility that they can qualify for as well. The Women's United Transportation Fund is pretty much a gas card program. And with that, we help families who need help getting to doctor's appointments, um, job interviews, things like that. Another big component of that as well is we have a few, uh, quite a few residents in Liberty County that are currently seeking cancer treatment and have to travel to Savannah. So a lot of them qualify for that as well on a monthly basis. Uh, Reunited, that's where we, we push literacy, early childhood literacy through Liberty County, and we work closely with the school boards and pre-K to get the books out to pre-K to first grade students. And a lot of you guys participated in that in the past with reading to the students when we went out, um, to the individual schools. Backpack Buddies is, is, uh, food insecurities on the weekends. So we do that each week. We have volunteers who come in and organize on Tuesdays. They pack the foods on Thursdays, and they're delivered out to the schools through volunteers, and the schools make sure that the students get those packages on Fridays so that they have food over the weekend. So total overall for the direct service center, we, um, into the community was four hundred and forty-two thousand, four hundred and eighty-five dollars. And we assisted six thousand two hundred and twenty-four residents. Okay. Now, the second way that money filters into Liberty County and has a direct impact is through our United Way Community Investments Fund. And that's through doing agency grants. And I have listed for you there agencies that I'm sure all of you are very familiar with. And I kind of just concentrated on the agencies that have a direct presence here in Liberty County. So as you can see, that's CASA, the Liberty County Manor House, the Frager Center, Helen's Haven, Senior Citizens Med Bank, and Consumer Credit Counseling. Those are all agencies that are stationed right here in Liberty County that provide services. And through our community investments process, we gave out one hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars in grants last year to help continue those programs throughout Liberty County.
So in total, when you add the, uh, the funding of the office itself and the staff and the, and the location with those services, our investment in Liberty County, seven hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars, which was a shock to me. Um, but a, but a happy one. Um, and I hope that it makes you feel proud. Um, I hope that it's something that you can, um, share frankly with others in this community about the value and the role of United Way and about, one of the things we want to make sure is that when someone needs help, they know where to turn. And if someone can give help, we ask them to give. We believe that the United Way is the united way. It is an eighty-three-year-old organization that has been sustained and led by these communities year after year, decade after decade. I will come and I will go. But the United Way will still be this asset, this infrastructure that allows the community to deliver service to the community and hopefully supports the work of our county governments and our city governments in delivery of service and improving lives in our, in our four county region. So with that, I'd love to answer any questions you might have.
Mr. Chairman, I have one question. Uh, I, um, Chris Stacy, do, do y'all know, y'all know Chris? Yeah. He, uh, contacted me and, um, I was just checking the email, um, and I was playing phone tag with someone named, um, Casey that I'm supposed.
Casey.
That's Casey.
I'm sorry, I didn't introduce Casey.
Yeah. He gave me, um, your number, and I was supposed to call you. I think you've called and left message for me a couple of times, so we, we, we'll get together. I, I need a, I'll, I'll give you a call.
He has a check for you.
Yeah, no. No, but, but.
We're grateful for Chris Stacy.
Yeah, yeah. It, it was interesting when, so y'all, y'all relocated to Olive Street?
Just recently.
Yeah, I, I live on Olive Street. No, no one told y'all that y'all need to run that by me before y'all move.
Uh-oh.
Yeah, but, um, Casey, I'll give you a call. Okay. All right, that's all I have.
I think we had, was it today I received the email from Laura. Laura sent an email out to all the commissioners about, uh, making, uh, United Way contributions, so.
You have it in your emails.
Yeah, and Laura did a very good job.
Well, hopefully now you have more information that, uh, can make you feel better about the work that you do to support the United Way. And we're really sincerely grateful for your loyalty and, and, and working with us every single year.
Well, you know, thank you, guys. You know, it's one thing to hear a presentation or to see it on TV, but when you bring it local and make us see, help us, not make us, help us see the local impact, it means a lot. It speaks volumes. It speaks volumes. So I hope those of you on Facebook are listening, too. Give to United Way. Give to United Way.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much for coming.
Pleasure to be with you all.
Casey.
All right. Stanley B. Harris Gym renovation, Mr. Holton.
All right, good evening.
Good evening, sir.
Guess y'all can hear me okay with this on, right?
You can.
Um, this is an update. So, um, like I said before, I was gonna come back. You've already seen this slide, but I like to pick up where we left off, um, because there were some modifications that we were making to this, to this site as a result of our last, um, last meeting. So I'm gonna try to see if I can make sure I get this thing right. The laser. There it is. Okay. So one of the things we talked about, um, at the last meeting was, uh, making sure we had ADA spaces here. We were gonna attach the sidewalks to the side exits. Um, and I just wanted to show this as, as just kind of a starting point, so you can see, um, on this, you know, you can see we're really getting into the actual hard, um, Revit drawings now, harder Revit drawing, drawing. So you can see, and I'll blow this up in a minute, but you can see this, um, you know, we added some ADA spaces here. Um, right next to the entrance, we created a plaza entrance, which I'm gonna show you in just a moment.
Thank you, sir.
Um, and, you know, we attached these sidewalks to these, uh, four entrances on the sides. And then basically the rest of this is, is pretty much the same, um, as you've seen it before. One of the things that I wanted to show, this is, we didn't show this last time, but this is what the building looks like now. With the new roof on it, um, when we went before, we actually enclosed the windows because a lot of the windows were broken out. And I wanted to show this image, um, so you could see, this is a rendering of what we're looking at now.
Impressive.
So it's kind of the same general shot. We took the drone shot and then tried to get the, um.
Impressive.
This, and this does, thank you. This does show, you know, your, our, you know, the sidewalks connecting around here.
Your little plaza.
These won't really look like this. I didn't have time to change this, but the HVAC systems. But we did move those HVAC systems to the backside, so, um, so they'll, they'll both be on this side of the building. Created a plaza area in front of the building. This is the enclosed porch. So we're really not adding square footage, but we kind of are. We really are using what's underneath our roof already.
Mm-hmm.
And then, you know, tying on the landscaping that's, you know, a lot of the tree types and everything that's already out there. You know, to dress up the front of this building. Um, and then you see right here, there are two covered entrances. And that's something I'm gonna show in plan and why we, why we did that, um, in just a minute. But I wanted to, um, all right, this is standing next to the multipurpose room at the end of the existing, um, wing. We're just kind of going around the side of the building now, so, so you can just kind of get an idea of what it's looking like as we walk east on the site. And this is basically looking at it from across, I mean, um, was right where the road is. And I believe, I believe I included on here a plan.
Who's that, Justin?
Checking them out.
It's amazing what we can do nowadays.
I got Marion on.
Yeah, there was a floor plan on there, but I, it may be in that, um, it's probably just called out as floor plan in the. Yeah, yeah, there we go. There we go. Skipping over it. So this floor plan, you have to kind of look past some of the dimension lines. I should have had this taken off, but you could see, um, this, this entrance here, these doors basically line up here. At one time, we had both sets of doors on this one side, um, which, when you look at first glance, it might make sense, but the problem we were having was that we weren't really using this entire lobby space. Um, and then also, we wanted to keep this wall behind the basketball goal clear so we could put, um, you know, the athletic wall pads on there for, uh, for runovers. Where you can, you can run through a pair of doors, I guess, but it's really not safe. Especially when it has that center molyon in there. So what we've done is we've, we've moved these doors and, and it's really created more of a, the building is a very formal building. It's a very symmetrical building. And we didn't want to take away from that by making the entrance asymmetrical. So that's, um, that was the, the primary driver. And then we started, and it really created really a good opportunity to have these, um, we showed these low brick planters, like you saw in the images. I can go back to the images also, but, um, with benches, um, on the planters. Um, and then we would be planting, we're not gonna plant a tall tree that's gonna grow up, you know, and cover the building, but, um, something a little bit lower there, um, in front of the building, just to give it some, some greenery. And then this is that glass wall that you saw in the, um, in, in that, in the images. So this does not exist right now. Right now, that is just the porch. And so we're enclosing that.
Why does that porch, about what, six feet?
It's, uh, nine feet deep, I think. The porch is. It's, um, maybe, I think it's just shy of nine feet deep. Cause we were concerned about, well, you can look at, oops. You can see the, the width of that door right there, six feet.
Mm-hmm.
If you turn it sideways, it's, you know, it's, it's about probably eight, eight. But it's, it's still pretty narrow, so I really felt it was important that you could walk straight through the lobby instead of having to, cause we even looked at trying to move these entrances to the center. And, but it's just not enough room to, to go in, turn, and then go back out. And what you may find in the future is that you make, like, one of these doors, like this one may be unlocked all day for the entrance, entrance door. When you have big events, you may want to unlock, unlock both doors, but they're always available for exiting. This building has excellent exiting, exiting on all four corners of the building plus the lobby. And then you can see some of that in this image here.
Looks pretty good.
And in real, and this, this is probably showing up the wrong color. See how these windows are gray? They are gonna be the clear anodized, so they match the whole theme of the, of the, um, complex there. So we'll put, um, new curtain wall, window wall, windows in there. Low-y windows and really, um, really dress it up. So we've already insulated the roof, so we've got that checked off. Now we gotta insulate the windows. And, um, I'm not showing any of the interior shots yet because we really want our interiors to go through and make some recommendations on, um, and if you guys have recommendations on color palettes, um, that you're interested in for this, let me know and I'll, I'll run that through our interiors and we'll, we'll make that work throughout the building. She's way better at that than I.
Well, you know, I don't know if you all know or not, but the, for, for that school, the colors were purple and gold.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
The original tigers.
Except purple and gold. Except purple and gold to satisfy my soul. I remember. I remember.
Chairman, I didn't know you was down there too.
I spent two years.
Oh, okay.
Gary spent one.
Yep, eighth grade. David, could you go back to the, to the floor plan? And I, I was just looking at that. So this is only gonna be, I know the last time you were here, we, we talked about the bleachers, but it's, it's just only gonna be bleachers on one side?
So those are portable bleachers.
Okay.
We're just showing a place for them.
Okay.
They can go anywhere, because they're, they are portable.
Oh, okay, okay. So we, we did talk about them old ones, just because you couldn't-
We're, we're, we're looking into that right now to see what we can do with them.
You, you don't have a match?
No. Lord have mercy. No, sir.
No, that, that, um, but, but that, um, that view-
Looks good, doesn't it?
Yeah, it looks real good.
Looks good, doesn't it?
And what, what I was wanting to do is get-
Back to life.
It is, and that's kind of what I, yes it is.
New life.
Yeah, brings, I mean, it's, the bones of this building are phenomenal. I mean, they're really good. When we first went in there, 12 years ago was the first time I went in there, I think, 12, 13 years ago. It was just striking to me, because the outside was all grown over, to see what that looks like on the inside. It's like, oh yeah, we could, this can definitely turn into something nice.
What's in the, in the back, back there, just, that's where you said the HVAC is, you, you moved them?
That's right. So right now, there's one sitting here. The other one is actually on the other side. It's sitting, it's back over here facing the pool. And so, you know, what we're trying to do, actually the ducts that are in there, those big spiral ducts, I mean, we're looking at reusing those. We can clean those out, because they're all, they're huge. We could clean those out and reuse them. We just have to reconfigure to the other side. Or we get into it and we realize that there's something else wrong with them, they have leaks, we can go with a fabric duct, kind of like we did with the Schuman Center. And it's, that's what we do in a lot of gymnasiums now, and you may actually prefer to do that. Just because they are, there's just a lot of benefits to, the fabric ducts give better circulation, and then they also are really self-cleaning. They say you can take them down and launder them, but I've never, because every time they turn on, they blow the dust off. So nothing ever has a chance to settle on those fabric ducts. But I did, you know, we did look at putting both of those units on this side and then leaving the other side, so that it can be, I don't know if we show-
Can.
Yeah, we showed some trees, some plantings going down that side.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, there you go, you can see them, just to clean up. Actually, you know what she did? She actually left it on here. If you see this right here, that's what, kind of what it looks like right now. And we're not doing that. We're actually pulling that one on, too. So it'll be clean on that whole side, you'll just see curtain wall windows.
But, I mean, you, you don't have a view of the back.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, what's Mary?
The, the, the back of the old gym, the eighth grade wing was behind there.
Right, that's right.
That's where the eighth grade wing was.
Yeah, I remember that.
But, but there was, you don't remember that? But, but, um, it was, you, you could come in from that way. Is there a back door back there?
There's not.
Nothing?
There's nothing back in there at all, but a pond, a holding pond.
Okay.
So, um, I didn't bring-
Do we own the, where the old football field was, that we saw that?
Yeah, all, all of that. Now, I do remember that now.
Yeah, yeah.
What was it, K-12 with the blocks?
What I remember is they won a lot of games inside the gym.
So back here is what you're talking about.
The football field, not so much.
Yeah. K-12 with the blocks.
So right now, the way this is, there's really no access, I mean, and before, this, because we're basically going back with the same, you know, the bathrooms are back in the same locations, they're just reconfigured for ADA, and then we're putting on new, you know, porcelain tile in them. But there's no access. Now, there probably was through here, on either side of that stage.
So just gonna just be just a brick wall from floor to ceiling in the back? No, no back door, nothing?
That's right, on the back of the building. That's the way it is, and that's the way it is now. And what these, what these are used-
I think right where he's got the green, right in there.
Right there.
Yeah, it came out to the side, yeah.
And I think that there was an old, like a doorway that was bricked up right there a long time ago.
Mr. Robbins class, yeah, you could come in the back.
Yeah. But, I mean, so, we, but we won't have this, when we finish all the remodeling, renovating, there, there will be no, no back door? I mean, for a fire exit or anything like that?
Well, now, your exits are-
Ex, on both sides.
On the side, okay.
There, 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 and then on the front.
Okay.
Unless you need something back there for some reason.
No, 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 no. I was just, I was just wondering.
Right now, what we're doing is these spaces-
You could come through that hall, you're right, Gary.
That were hallways?
Old days, you could, there was a door.
Right there.
Yeah. And, and the stage was there?
Mm-hmm.
On that end.
Still got the stage.
We ran the drone all the way around, so I guarantee you could see it plain as day on that, on those pictures. You could probably see where it was bricked up, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We throw down the old eighth grade wing.
Yeah.
But that's interesting, though, because I don't, none of the drawings that I had, the older drawings, show that wing back there.
Mm-hmm. It was there.
Man, I'm having a flashback. Johnny Blue used to be back there waiting on me to take my lunch.
There's the wing back there. That's the way you-
Now, moving forward, we are looking at, you know, if, if, if the direction looks good tonight, I was gonna cut the engineers loose on this.
Tell my cousins on it.
I think it looks real good. I, I, I don't see, I think it looks real, excellent job.
It does.
Excellent start.
Very nice.
Well, I'll cut them loose, and I was gonna give them about four weeks to get their drawings. They're gonna have to go to the site, you know, and, you know, but we're looking at all, we don't, we're not reusing any plumbing. We learned that from the other one, you know? We don't, none of the plumbing's any good, so we're tearing all the plumbing out.
And this, Mr. Chairman, we, we need to move on with this thing. I, I wanna, I wanted to get up and running. I, I wanna take one more jump shot in there, before my knees go completely out, now, before they go completely out.
We're gonna put height adjusters on there, you know, so you can-
I don't, I don't, I just wanna take a jump shot in the new gym before my knees go completely out.
Now, David, David, I know you explained to me, when I explained to you that up under the stage-
Right.
That's where we used to throw the chairs at, the folding chairs on those long push carts. Like you said, we cannot do that anymore.
That's right.
Why, Ocean?
They, yeah, they don't want anything underneath that, that stage for, just for fire, it's fire code reasons, so. But what we have done is up here in this corner, this is a very large storage up in that corner, for, for that purpose. And you'll, you'll be able to get a lot more, you know, all the schools that were built in the 50s all had that storage underneath the platforms. Platforms were about this high, and they all had these big, you know, lift-up storage and, of course, now you can still go in there and look under it, but, you look under it right now, there's all kinds of stuff, you can see.
The first graduating class from, what, 50?
But we are having to, we are having to lower that down in order to get the, because we have to provide ADA access to that, to that platform.
So what do you need from us now?
Yeah, we're, we're gonna, architecturally, we've kept, we've already moved forward. All I'm, all I'm gonna do now is cut the engineers loose. And one of the big things that I am gonna have to make sure is that we, you know, Trent mentioned NRCS earlier. You know, they can, they can, if we can keep this thing under an acre, you know, so we gotta, you know, we may be blowing it, you know, here and here with land disturbances, but we gotta be able to keep it under an acre, so we don't have to submit that, you know, through NRCS, because that will add two months. Forty-five day, was it 45 days now, Trent? Is the minimum? That's the first, that's the first round of it.
David, I have one question. Trent, you know, right next door, we got a water issue flooding. On the backside, are we gonna have any problems on that backside, on the, I guess you can call it the southwest side with water? Although we got a holding pond out there. Joe, you know what I'm talking about?
Up in this area here.
David and I talked about that. It's probably an opportunity to go in there while we're doing this project. In fact, we're gonna have to do something with the, with the storage of that water and, and possibly improve that storage in the back to help some of that drainage.
That would be great.
That ditch, that, the, though, if you remember, ditch that carries that water on that side, we cleaned it when we first built the facility, it actually runs back to 84. But I think there's, yeah, I'd like for us to kind of improve that.
Certain section, it goes-
It splits.
Yes, yes.
It's on the hill.
Yeah. I just happened to thought about that, so I don't know.
And that's, and that's all back in, in this area?
It is.
Right, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I remember that swale being there.
Yeah.
The swale was supposed to, I think, carry that, this water back this way, but then there was all this that was heading-
Coming back up to 84.
Heading back, yeah.
Yes, sir, we want to address that.
And you, you know, we, um, do, do we have any plans, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Stevens, to, to have some kind of bronze, you know, like a plaque, Mr. Harris?
A bus?
A bus? Don't they have a bus for Mr. Cooper down there?
They do.
Right in front of the alumni.
What about the championship trophy? Who, who has that? The 65?
I think the alum- I don't know.
Is it in the, in the museum?
Might be in there.
Might be, yeah.
Don't quote me.
I think, I think me and Mr. Chairman are supposed to get together on some wordings and anybody else up here who wants to participate, not just-
But I, I mean, we, we need to really do something, um-
Yeah, do the-
Like a trophy case, if, if they move it from there. And I know the Alumni Association would probably have, you know, someplace on that, but you know-
They wanna help.
Something to honor Mr. Harris.
Oh, yeah, they, they wanna help.
Some kind of way.
Mr. Chair.
Building his name after him, but, you know, we could really do something real, real nice in there for him.
And now, we just, that's, you know, it doesn't have to be called the gymnasium, you know, you have to think about the verbiage on, you know, we can call it Samuel B. Harris Gymnasium, or we can call it-
Recreation Center.
Recreation Center, or Memorial Center, or, you know, whatever. Just, you know, you call it the Samuel B. Harris Memorial Recreation Center in East End Comp. Just remember, each one of those letters is about $75, so. I'm up. About $75 a letter.
I think I like the simplicity of gymnasium. Gym. It looks nice, yeah.
We, we always call him Sam B., that's all we-
Right, Sam.
Sam B.
You don't even need Harris. You should say Sam B., everybody's-
Every one of them.
It's just four letters.
Hey, oh, he's a hoagie.
Move forward, sir, move forward.
Yeah.
Seriously, though, with, with like any kind of display cases and that sort of thing that we need to build into it, that's just, I mean, that's easy enough to do at this point, of course.
I mean, that would be nice, but, um, just like you said, I, I recommend just getting with the Alumni Association, because Commissioner Gillar, I know whenever my father was the president for many, many years over that, I know you all preserved a lot of those trophies, so they're somewhere.
Yeah, they're in the Alumni Room.
Alumni Room, correct.
Those that they have.
Right.
Well, we, I think I sent out an email the last time to Mr. Brown and Chairman and AC. We were gonna try to get together and see what happened. We got-
He's, he was going somewhere, he said wait till he got back, and we just never did.
Tried to initiate-
Get together, yeah.
What could be on the plaque. And also, Mr. Chairman, while we mention it, the, that they paw.
Mm-hmm.
Man, isn't this a district one? Yeah. Uh, let's, let's have Ms. Holton, so, so you said you need the green light? Can you make this whole room turn green?
You got it.
You got the green light?
What do we need, a motion, some kind of motion, or what?
I don't think we need a-
We don't need nothing.
No, we just need the thumbs up, man.
Go for it, David.
Thumbs up. Beautiful job.
Hey, and David, the last, when you were here the last time, that, that other guy, he has some kind of visual-
Three-dimensional?
Yeah, yeah, the three, the 3D, everything like that. If, whenever you get ready to do that for the gym, I wanna play against Justin.
This actually is there. This is in that, um, in the-
No, I'm, I'm talking, if you need two basketball players, then I could take Justin. You could, you could put me and him there virtually, I'll, I'll, I'll take him to the hoop.
You can actually control with an Xbox controller, too, so.
Yeah? Okay.
We actually are, in all seriousness, we're looking at using actual people in some of our-
This is, this is good.
I, I'd take most of it to the hoop, too, then.
Thank you, David.
Easy.
Another good use of Splos funds, y'all.
We can go tomorrow now, if you want.
Liberty County Soccer Society to Mr. Randy Branch.
Yep. Good evening, um-
And back up.
And back up.
He's quiet. He's quiet, they.
Chairman Lovett and Commissioners and Mr. Brown, thank you for letting us be here today. First thing I was gonna say, from his, and this was Phil just added this to me, is thanking you for saving Liberty County history as you did at that high school and reutilizing that building. That's, uh, from a historian's point of view, that is extremely important to have these structures that were part of our history to be preserved and reutilized for different needs. And that kind of leads right into where, what I am mentioning again, I spoke, I don't know, a few months ago, I guess, about this project, but, but right now, what we want to do, as the Executive Committee of the Historical Society, we want to preserve and restore the property at 135 South Main Street. Our plan is to contract with a company called Ethos Preservation for a preservation and utilization plan for this site. Now, that plan is gonna be somewhere between $25,000 and $30,000. And that would become, be funded by the Historical Society. Once that is complete, we would like to decide with your approval and your input on where we would go from there. Their plan basically is gonna take the building, look at it structurally, and tell us what would need to be done to preserve that building and bring it back up to code, basically. After that, our plan would be to seek grants to bring that building up to code. And, but since the owner is Liberty County, Liberty County would have to be the grant applicant, and the funds would have to be, ran through the, through the Liberty County. The Historical Society would be the grant writer and oversee the renovas- renovation with reporting back to the Commissioners. Again, the county would be the administrator of the fund. And what we are seeking is just a, uh, approval that, once we spend that twenty-five thousand dollars, that the county would act as, since you are the owner of that building, act as a, you know, we would be doing the grant and be trying, putting that together, but the county would actually be the grant applicant and the receiver of the funds. We cannot act in that behalf because we're not the owner of the building. So the county would maintain ownership of it and the improvements therein. We would utilize, uh, that's the first part, we will be utilizing the bottom floor only. And we've mentioned before, some of you have, uh, hopefully, most of you have had time to go by and see the Susie King Taylor exhibit, and the new Dorchester Academy exhibits that have been put together. That quality that is in the Dorchester Academy would be what we're looking to, to do for a countywide basis, covering all aspects of our, of our county's history, good, bad, everything. Not, uh, not leaving out any, any history and trying to truly present the history as it was. Our, and one thing we do have coming up, uh, county was formed in seventeen seventy-seven, as it says right here. Our two-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary will be here in twenty twenty-seven. So we have about six years, maybe a little less than six years, before that two-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary. And it would be nice, I think, to, to have a facility that the history could be, uh, shown, uh, utilized for lots of different, uh, projects and ideas, but basically covering the whole range of the, of our history. And that is basically our idea. So, again, we're just seeking your input as to whether you would act as the grant writer after we presented the grant, grant recipient, and then distributing the funds, if that's at all possible.
All right, help me out, I was kind of on a high from David's presentation. You're going to have Ethos come in and do?
I would hope they'll do something like he was showing. With, with a, uh, for the amount of money we're going to be spending.
Okay. And then?
To do the, to do the, uh, whatever you call all that, the, uh, the, the way it would look and be utilized. Plus, give us what has to be done. I mean, major things are for sure, the roof, got, you got water damage in the back stairwell area. It would, uh, the heating and air would have to be replaced. You know, I don't, I don't know what else.
Then after that process, you would apply for the grant?
Correct. Once, once the feasibility is done.
Okay, okay.
Would be where we would, you know, we just want to make sure before we spend that funds, because that's a significant part of what our, of what our, uh, what we have. Uh, fact, it's about, um, what is that, twenty-five percent? No, a little less than twenty-five percent of our entire funds be contributed to that. We want to, want to, to know that the county would be a partner with us in going forward, with trying to, to put together a plan to have that building converted, um, from a vacant downtown building to a facility that could be used.
All right, Wes, Kim's here.
I had just had.
Okay, go ahead.
You were going to spend the funds, but are they going to do the upstairs and downstairs, or just down?
Um, well, we'd love to do both, just depends upon what funds and all would be. I mean, each floor is about three thousand square feet. So it's a good size floor. Initially, we would not need that, that top floor. But we would have to, um, uh, I mean, we'd have to get it ready, basically, for renovation. I mean, the, uh, the stairwell, I don't know, we'd probably have to put in an elevator, would be put in, the heating and air ran through it, to it. Lot, you know, this is big space up there. And that could be part of the project. If we didn't need that space, we could lease out or rent that out, or the county could, or whatever.
I think it's a good start to a, a building that needs to be preserved, and you're willing to.
Yeah.
What's the layout?
Yeah.
Um, what's the layout upstairs now? I mean, is it?
It's got a little office, cubbies, wouldn't you say, Phil?
Old bank building, so it's got.
We've been up there once.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, it's got office.
Yeah, I think it, uh.
Petition.
I don't really know what it was, for, after it was a bank.
It's been, I don't know, Joey had to talk about it.
Counties used it.
It used to be a county, it used to be a county extension office.
I'm going to say, the county extension.
It had, it had small individual offices that are just petitions.
Mm-hmm. That's what I remember.
Most of the building has been cut up into small offices.
Yeah.
That are not load-bearing walls, they're just.
Yes.
Walls. The original structure is told to me by an eighty-four-year-old here, it was two-story building that was three thousand foot open on the top floor and three thousand foot on the bottom floor. The post that went up the middle that held the second floor up. It was two open rooms in its original construction in forty-two. In forty-nine, when the bank acquired it, they poured the vault and put in the back and divided the downstairs and upstairs up into the cubicles. And I believe the county might have redone it some.
Probably.
But that's the history as it was related to me of the building. So we have the potential, once we get the assessment done, this physical structure, we may be able to turn it back into these two large rooms. I don't know. You can come, come, cut it up into however you want it.
So you, you all would need the counteract as a conduit for the grant?
Yes.
And I know.
Yes.
My finance, my finance person is over here, so we have to manage that, but you, you all would do the grant writing, we just, we, we're the fiduciary of that right word for, for the, so, staff, what are y'all saying?
Unless y'all would just like to give us the building.
No, we'll apply for it.
Hard to answer, because, I mean, that's a little bit down the road of what grant would be there, what kind of record-keeping requirements would be. You know, I, it's hard to answer the time element without knowing the grant.
Mr. Tamara Hayes at Coastal Resources Commission has identified several grants in the state and federal and private sector. This project would qualify for, but we've never moved forward to that because we've always run into the owner of the building as to apply.
And we'll say this, staying away from federal grants would be better, unless you, unless you have a project that exceeds about two million dollars, because the extra requirements that come in there, both in time element and cost, it increases the cost of your project probably a third to, uh, to follow the federal requirements on the grant.
Well, there's a lot of private.
Yeah, a lot, there's a lot of others, though, that are out there. Without looking at the specific grant.
And that's, we're just saying, this is where we're going, we're going to go ahead and pay for the assessment, we're going to start the ball rolling, see what we got, and then, once that's done, we'd be coming back to y'all to share.
Of course, we, we would not be spending the twenty-five thousand dollars or so unless we were reasonably sure that the building was going to be, uh, we, we could utilize it.
We're going to do a little hometown reconnaissance before we acquire the preservation. In other words, a few people in the construction industry to come and take a look at it and give us their opinion of it.
Yeah.
That's a, that's a key component to it. All right, Randy, I'll turn it back over to Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Well, we appreciate that, I'm still waiting, um.
That's what your backup do for you, Randy.
I'm still waiting to hear about the.
What your backup do for you.
Grant, if you're going to.
Yeah, I, I guess, Mr. Chairman, if, um, you know, when, when they come back, if they, you know, got their presentation, if they, if that could answer all of those questions, you know, from, from beginning to end, you, you know, um, you know, Joey, the concern that, about the, the type grant, I mean.
No, I'm reading, no, yeah, so, I mean, what we can do is, I can get with Randy and those and, and, um, and talk with Martina, but to see what grants she's looking at. Look into some of the grant requirements and talk to her particularly, so we could, we, we could, we could allocate staff, staff hours to give you an idea of our staff time.
I know sometimes when you write grants, you can write in the, the administration part.
Some of those block grants do that, some of these others don't do that, and, and the administrative calls just reimburse you.
Yeah.
Half-time, not necessarily create staff hours, so it's.
Yeah, so, so, Randy, just so you and Phil are very clear, we applaud the project, there's no doubt about that, and thank you for also being preservation manager, saved that old building that's been sitting there, how many years, a lot of years.
Long time, empty.
Uh, but, you know, we're, our, our finance, uh, office is, 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 is not the biggest office in town.
I understand that.
They're managing some other things now that are a little bit laborious, so we're trying to ensure that we don't overtax them with, uh.
Understand.
But, but if you'll get with Joey and just kind of let her know more about what, what it would entail. And then maybe we have to get with Kelly and find some other creative way, uh.
We, we'll look at the grants.
Work around.
Let's look at the grant, and Kim and I can look at it with, with these guys and determine what's involved in it and be glad.
I, I, I think we could work it out, yeah.
I think we can work something out.
Because if, if we don't, I mean, what, what, what?
What else we going to do with that building?
What we going to do with the building? We, we, we.
So, one, I hear, and we want, we're going to meet, and then we're going to come back, because I, we don't want to let Ethos start until we get probably a little further along. Is that correct, how you?
Sure, I mean, we, there's no reason we can't bargain anything that I hope doesn't happen, that we can't get together and be able to come back by your next meeting, sure.
Okay.
Then two, three weeks.
Okay.
Now, um. One particular grant had the stipulation that you had to be the owner, just that.
I, well, from what I understand, I think any grant.
Really, okay.
Is not going to give us money to renovate.
It seems like legalese could take care of that.
I don't believe any grant is going to give us the money to renovate a building that's not ours.
Yeah.
It's like a bank loaning you money to renovate your house.
Exactly.
And I'm, and, and it's my loan, or my money, they're not going to, uh, to do that.
This isn't the first time that, that we've had to do this, right?
Yeah, this we have.
I mean, we're, we're, we're doing it right now with the.
Leasing, not owning, we're leasing.
With the head start, correct?
Uh, similar.
Similar.
We've done, we've done something closer with what we do on our leases, what, in fact, their lease, and, and improvements over there. But I, I think the main thing is, without bogging down too much, is that the, the, the main reason that the county would act as a conduit is because they're state grants, state or federal grants, so they can't go to private agencies or nonprofits. They got to be a pass-through of a local government entity, uh, for those, the private grants probably are different, but the, but definitely the local gov- or the government grants are going to have to come through a government agency, most of the time, ninety-nine percent of the time.
Okay.
But we'll, we got, we can look at it.
All right.
No problem.
Just a quick suggestion as well, uh.
Yes, sir.
Uh, I'm over here.
He, who's talking?
I can't see any lips move.
Yeah, I, I know, I know. Yeah, that was a real weird moment right there. But, uh, you, you know, I've, I've had an opportunity to go to, like, different museums as well, and what you were saying about you all only utilizing the bottom floor.
Mm-hmm.
I noticed, you know, they have a lot of vents.
Mm-hmm.
So, you know, you could use that as event space upstairs, too.
Absolutely, that, that would be a source of.
Some of the coolest events at a museum, ever.
Your grants do not provide operating income.
Right.
There only going to be capital improvements, basically, so you would, you know, that would be a source of, of funding to, to have a person there. You know, you'd have to, you're not, you, you can get people to volunteer, but, but that only goes so far.
Absolutely.
I'm keeping it.
Yeah.
If you can just, Randy, if you guys can just email me.
Sure.
Those grant sites.
Okay.
Because I know, like, you've got links to them.
Yep.
And then, that would, we can, we can do that research, and then we'll touch base.
Okay. Now, it's good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Randy.
See you guys. Proposal, MSW Consultants, Mr. John Culbertson.
See if, John, are you on the phone? The, the link actually, the link actually dropped, and.
We have paperwork?
Is that the solid waste?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Hello, this is John.
Hey, John, this is Joey Brown, you're, you're live in the, in the county commission meeting, and I apologize that that conference link dropped, and we tried to get it back up, so, uh, you are here, and they have their, you're, they have the attachment day, the scope of work, uh, in front of them.
Well, super, um, and, uh, am I coming through okay? I hear you loud and clear.
I think so.
Yes, he is.
Super.
And, and if, John, maybe, uh, just without, you know, detailing necessarily the scope of work, but if you can give some background on, on what your proposal involves, of course, as the commissioner members, this is a follow-up to a discussion about getting a proposal to possibly expand, uh, polycart service into the unincorporated area, so.
Um, well, thank you, I would be happy to do that, and, um, I, I'll go try to start pretty briefly and, uh, leave it to the commissioners to drill down as they see fit. Um, this is just a quick introduction, uh, John Culbertson, I'm a principal with MSW Consultants. Uh, we are a, um, a national management consulting company that specializes in the municipal waste and recycling industry, so we work with, um, cities and counties and solid waste authorities across the country, uh, to help them evaluate and optimize the services they provide their residents. Uh, it's been kind of an interesting ride here the last few years, there have been some real challenges, uh, in the recycling industry, um, uh, you know, certainly continued advances in some of the collection technologies. Uh, but in any case, um, uh, we understood from our discussions, uh, with Mr. Brown and other staff, uh, that there may be some interest because of the, you know, continued influx of new residents into the county that are interested in, in possibly having, um, more of a higher level of service, uh, and receiving a curbside collection. There was an understanding of, uh, helping the county think through in very clear quantitative defensible, uh, terms what it might look like were the county to become, uh, a direct provider of a curbside polycart service on a broader basis across the county. And so, um, I'll just say that, um, our firm has some, uh, very robust collection system modeling capabilities. Uh, we've got a, a real good way to look at a service territory, uh, and try to understand, uh, and project, uh, what the operating resources, routes, staffing, capital costs, uh, and, you know, uh, staffing, uh, all the components of a collection system. And, uh, I do want to mention, uh, we have, uh, you know, had the pleasure of, of working with the county in the past, so we do have a, a baseline understanding of the current convenience center system. And I think the real important part of looking at polycart throughout Liberty County would be not just what does that polycart system look like, um, but as is also included in our scope, what is an orderly and thoughtful way to begin scaling back some of the convenience centers and transitioning, um, the collection of, of waste and bulky materials, um, you know, from the convenience centers to more of a curbside service. And so in that regard, um, we've put together what I would call, uh, an approach that's going to provide very clear and very definitive information for you as decision-makers and potentially for your residential customers, um, just to be able to compare and contrast the current service levels they get and essentially the, the current, you know, cost of those service levels with the convenience center system, and how, uh, over time, that system might migrate to curbside polycart. And, and actually, we also have some, uh, scenarios that would move, um, a kind of a lower-level baseline bulky waste curbside collection, because you, you all know, not everything fits in a polycart. Uh, and so, uh, essentially, um, the scope before you was intended to be quite, uh, you know, quite comprehensive, really making sure we don't, we leave no stone unturned and are able to answer the questions that are liable to come up. Um, but, uh, you know, that said, we are here to serve at your pleasure, and at the pleasure of Mr. Brown and the Solid Waste Authority, and, uh, with that said, I, I feel like I should stop talking and would be happy to answer any questions or explore, uh, any thoughts or concerns you may have.
One other thing, just, I guess, for the commission, I mentioned to John today when we were talking about setting up this call, was that I know several of y'all have been approached, and we've, we've been approached, in fact, about the possibility of considering, uh, a contract with a municipality, uh, to provide service to them, and so I mentioned that to John, and, and, uh, without specific naming the municipality, uh, certainly, that could be incorporated in here, a very easy part of that, um, so.
Yeah, and, and that, I, I think, I think with that, with that, I appreciate that mention, um, I will offer just a couple of thoughts, um, for the commissioners about, um, getting into a, uh, more direct curbside service. Uh, the waste collection business is a business that the efficiency improves as the scale gets larger. So, um, certainly, uh, if there are cities that might be interested in receiving a county-provided service, that would presumably have a beneficial impact, uh, on the unit cost. So I think that's something to, 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 uh, to note. I think another comment I would make, and, and, you know, we believe in trying to give very clear-eyed, uh, thoughts on, uh, taking on a collection business. And, um, you know, the county, uh, has done, I think, an excellent job maintaining its equipment, maintaining its facilities, and has, I think, demonstrated the aptitude to be operationally proficient. Um, you know, that, that's certainly a big decision, if a county is going to get into greater collection, you know, be able to maintain a solid waste collection fleet, um, you know, being able to, uh, accrue the capital that you need to replace collection trucks on a routine basis, because you don't want them to get too old, because then you're not able to provide the service. And I think, I think a comment I would have is Liberty County has, you know, has a, a definite platform to be successful going this route, and, and I have to tell you, we, we do work in enough parts of the country and with enough, uh, different, uh, cities and counties, but that's not always the case, so, um, you know, to some degree, um, if I may opine for a moment, um, the, the benefits of the county taking on the service, um, have to do with, um, better and higher control to your customers, um, um, probably with, um, having the ability to pilot test, uh, additional services in the future and, and meet evolving customer needs as the county population grows. Certainly, there's a little bit of risk, uh, you know, coming, coming into it, but again, um, you know, we feel like, uh, we're, you know, very well-suited to come back to you with, um, you know, clear guidance, um, uh, we really enjoy working with staff at the county, again, a good, good group of folks that really help us out in assembling the information we need. Uh, and so, again, I think our, our objective is to give you very sound decision support, uh, in looking at, at something like taking on polycart service.
Ms. Chairman, I had a question for, for Ms. John on the, um, the proposal on the budget, does that, that includes all tasks under the scope of work? Is that correct?
Yeah, yeah. John, I'm sorry, I didn't know if you could hear it, yeah.
I'm sorry, Joey.
I didn't know if you, did you, were you able to hear it?
Um, I, I believe the question involved the budget, so, so the budget that we provided is all-inclusive for the full tasks, um, both labor and expenses, uh, so we, we have built all that in. You know, and, and I, I think the other, the other comment I would make is, you know, we've tried to, um, link. You know, and I think the other, the other comment I would make is, you know, we've tried to link the budget to the series of tasks and thought processes that we need, so that we're able to answer the questions we have. But yes, that budget is all-inclusive.
So, that would be for the rest of the unincorporated area to have curbside service and keep the...
Yes, so I think more specifically, the budget that we submitted, we would, that would enable us to come back to you with actually several different scenarios that would compare the current system, you know, your status quo system, the resources and costs of your current system. It would enable us to then compare that to being able to offer a Polycart throughout the county unincorporated area and potentially to, if another city is interested, that would be actually, that would actually dovetail in very nicely under our current budget. So, that would, that would be in there. And it would also let us provide several alternatives for how bulky waste might be collected between the convenience centers and also a curbside bulk service, because, you know, to some degree, this all speaks to migrating away from a system of using convenience centers to provide collection service to residential households to more of a curbside-centered service.
So, I think in John and I, and I apologize that we're not able to hear as good as maybe we could there. I think there was, you know, the discussion about whether the convenience centers would be maintained. So, let me try to help there a little bit. I think what he would show is no, not to shut down the convenience centers immediately. I mean, those are some of the discussions that we had one time, if you remember, about how do you want to use the convenience centers? Obviously, the household waste goes away. Do you want to still require residents at the end of the day to go in, recycle, take their bulk waste there? So, then they become bulk and recycling stations, dry trash stations. And then, you know, as we talk about migrating eventually away from those, I don't know that we'll ever see that, but in a time where the county is so congested that you, that you're doing curbside collection of everything, dry trash, bulks, you know, whatever. But I think that's sometime down the road. I'd think that you'd come back and say, what is it we're going to migrate a little bit away from? Or it's going to be the household trash?
Yeah.
And then, and then have a plan over some period of time, you know, how that, how that gets rolled out.
Yeah, that was well-stated, Joey. Thank you for that.
And also, Mr. Brown, this would include the current folks or citizens in unincorporated area who currently have pickup from a private sector?
So, as you...
That we would, this would be countywide?
Yes, ma'am. So, his analysis is going to be a countywide look regardless of whether they've got service or not. And then, and then the, who has service demand? We've got those files anyway, because we have to roll those in each year to do offsets with for the billings. And so, we'll take that, we discussed that on a conference call with the staff. We'll basically take those and roll those into something too. And there, you know, as you recall, when we discussed it many, many years ago now, those are, those are a consideration. Those are private enterprise, it's already heavy in those areas. And so, I don't, I don't know that we'd look at a split-type system, but you could to say, okay, we're not going to service the sectors they service, or we are going to service those sectors. And whether you use us or not, there's going to be a minimal charge for those services, which might involve some, although maybe not legally required, certainly consideration for buying those service areas or buying those customers on a one-time basis. And there's some, some, actually some federal stuff that goes into that with...
Okay.
Being able to do service and stuff like that.
Mr. Brown, with a municipality wanting to engage in a contract, would the contract be with the county or would it be with this?
It would be, well, I mean, you got a perfect example out there. You got a contract right now with Flemington. We do their curbside collection and bulk collection, in fact, on the side there. So, it would, it'd be, it'd be with the city directly, Commissioner Stevens and the commission.
Okay, let's say, and I heard what you said earlier about the more, the more the, the heavier the scales is, the better it is. So, let's say this municipality contracts up and then all of a sudden, four years from now, two years from now, they back out. What effect would that have on the contract that we have?
Well, it depends on how much has developed since that time in that service area, right? So, it's almost like having a dead run on a dump truck. That you, you know, you want to put the most dirt in that you got. And by the way, on the way back, if you pick up a load to carry and drop back off, that's good. So, the service demand is staying busy all the time.
Okay.
In those routes. And so, if you had enough development around that municipality that your efficiency gained, even without it, then there'd be no law. It's hard, really hard to say without knowing exactly how many customers you're bringing on and what's going to happen in those future years around that same area that might still be efficient. So, there might not be a tremendous loss.
Now, last question. I think that, let's say, time is, time is of the essence on this issue. What?
Yes, sir.
How can we?
With the city issue?
Yeah.
Yeah, my understanding is, and I think that in some conversations that may have had there, that they were made aware of the study that might go on. Now, I mean, if, certainly if the commission wanted to, we could engage, just like we did for Flemington, we could engage a separate analysis of what it would take to service that particular city if they so wanted us to. The commission could, you know, entertain doing that. It's, you know, however y'all want to do that. We, I think we all know that in order to get into, we're almost to the point now, Commissioner Walder brought this up earlier, Commissioner Gator certainly understands all of this. But we're almost at a point now where we need to buy some additional equipment anyway. If we go into that city or any city, really, to take on another city to do curbside, we're going to have to buy some more equipment. And so, you know, I think, we could do an analysis strictly of that city if we wanted to do that.
Okay. And it's purchasing or leasing? Are we, we're going to look at both of those options?
Well, for us, it's a lease to, lease to own, pretty much is what it is. Which I think, I think at, at the end of the day, it's smart to keep your assets so that, you know...
Future?
Yeah.
The city in question, is time of the essence or is...
What was that, Ms. Chairman?
My understanding is they're fixing, they're coming up on renewal. And they have the option, obviously, to just do a short renewal while we do this study too. That's the other option for them.
That would probably be their best, just do the short renewal.
It gives us time to look.
Give us time, give us time to look at it like we want to.
Yes, sir.
So, what do you need from us, Mr. Brown? What do you need from us?
We, we just need to know if the commission wants to go ahead and move forward with engaging MSW to do this, to do this review and if we want to try to go ahead and include that particular city.
My, one question I got. How much is this review going to cost us?
Well, this right here, it's a...
Forty-six-nine.
Forty-six thousand nine hundred dollars countywide, which, which, you know, according to Mr. Culbertson a minute ago, he could also roll that in.
Into the...
Into the city, into that portion.
Joey, now, this is for the unincorporated area of Liberty County, from one end to the other.
Yes, sir, from one end to the other.
The whole county.
Anything outside of...
And our, the current city that we serve is, that's...
Well, that, you know, that's just been analyzed. Of course, when he goes in to analyze the whole county, he'll be relooking at those numbers, because obviously there's more customers. And then, so as we consider what to do there, it's a little bit of a domino effect to the better that would happen to relook at what happens to that customer base too. And really, the growth in that customer base, because it continues to grow too down there. But yes, sir.
I would say we move forward.
I would say so too.
Yeah, where is, John, where are you today? You know, we, I like for people to be standing in front of me when I'm talking to them. Where is John?
I have to confess of getting my wires crossed. I actually had every intention of being there. It turns out, I'm not even at my home office. I had some long-planned travel and just out of all town today from my parents' house in Maryland, first time I've seen my family with COVID in two years. So, I had that scheduled for a while and wasn't able to make it. That said, we're located in Orlando, Florida. We would expect to be able to speak to you face-to-face and frankly, also to have our operations folks have the opportunity to, you know, observe the terrain, the topography, the setouts, you know, just basically have a great operational understanding of you. Certainly, this industry is not one you could just do sitting at your desk.
Yeah, okay, appreciate it.
So, you need a consensus, sir?
I mean, if you want to, or actually a motion to accept the contract with MSW is presented.
Yes, Ms. Chairman, I would make that motion, that we enter into a contract.
Motion to secondly, contract with MSW Consultants. Any discussion? I think you did a good job of explaining, you made us feel comfortable. Any other discussion?
Is that, is that cost negotiable?
It will be recouped.
You're getting to be like Mr. Brown now.
Hey, I'm, don't ever sit at the table with me to negotiate. I promise you.
John's live on Facebook. I, I mean, I would, John, the, you know, the question, if you couldn't hear it, maybe you passed out. What size of cost negotiable? Absolutely, we can...
So, first of all, that's a totally fair question. I have no problem, I think it's a fair question, I'm happy to answer it. The couple of things that I would say that could change the cost have to do with the level of project reporting. I think we have built in a formal written report for this. I have some clients that say, you know, we don't need your fancy written consultant report. We'll just take a PowerPoint executive summary slide deck as our final report. And so, there's a little bit of opportunity. And I'm assuming you're asking me to reduce the budget and not increase it, so I'm going to go with that.
Yeah, this is Commissioner Fraser. Yeah, I'm kind of frugal, man, I'll be honest with you.
I think we have, I also think we built in some travel to come and talk to you and present in person. So, we do have some travel costs.
We could scratch that.
That have actually said, hey, we don't want you to come.
No, but Commissioner Gillis said...
We want you to be online for variety of reasons. And so, again, those are things that we'd be happy to revisit. And I also want to confirm what Mr. Brown said for the budget we have. As long as we know going in which city is contemplating, you know, participating in a county program, we would be able to do that within the budget proposed, because then we could build in those assumptions as we're building the model. I think what I'd like to ask is, you know, don't add that on, you know, fifty percent of the projects and we have to go back and kind of redo the model that we've already started. But I think if we can confirm that going in, we would be able to accommodate that for the budget.
Okay, good.
Oh, and also, I could tell you, I see on task one, you were talking about the topography. We're on coast of Georgia, it's flat. Real, real flat, everything's flat.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I think, I think, I guess a couple of other things I would mention about the budget. We actually intend to do this work in a way that's going to track the cost down to the per-household level for the different customer bases. So, there is, yeah, there is a little bit of nuance to that. And, you know, we do have built-in the system observations and frankly, there's a, there's a level of collaboration with staff. I think we want to avoid being that consultant that thinks they know what's going on and comes in and, you know, says, oh, you should do this, this, and this. The reality is, you know, we need to capitalize on the good relationships we have with staff and work through with them how this transition might happen to Polycart and then what is a good, responsible, achievable plan to scale away from the convenience centers in a way that's not going to disrupt your customer base and it's not going to have everybody having a rage shock. I mean, there are a lot of considerations that we want to make sure, you know, we're giving good guidance. We've had that collaborative opportunity with staff to come back to you with just a really good solution.
All right, we let you and Mr. Brown work that out. Commissioner Fraser's concerns duly noted. All in favor? Yeah, Paul, all right, thank you. Thank you, John.
Thank you, John, very much for being with us.
Thank you.
Oh, my pleasure. I'm glad you're able to catch me and thank you so much. Have a good night, everybody.
Good too.
Okay, bye-bye.
Seriously though, John needed to be here for...
At least one.
Yeah, somebody. I mean, that was a lot of, lot of hit and miss for, you know, for us to take a vote on that. That's just my...
I'll take the proposal, Liberty County Health Department.
Yes, sir. I did a memo up there for you. We had a review committee that, well, let me back up. As you're aware, we took proposals for architectural services for firms to provide those services to the health, for the new health department. Those services are going to be paid by budgetary funds that have been saved by Coastal Health District, which is great.
Yep.
And so, we wanted to go ahead and get that onboard, try to get something designed in a format that would give especially the ARPA committee some idea of maybe what was needed to, you know, achieve for a satisfied, if it deemed proper for the health department. That being said, we had nine firms that submitted proposals, committee scored them down, did final interviews with three, got the memo there, I won't read it to you. Basically, the committee has, came down to two, which we feel were very well-qualified based on past performance and satisfactory performance with James Buckley. The committee's recommendation was that the commission consider war the services to James Buckley to go ahead and start on that project.
All right, that's the committee's recommendation.
Yes, sir. Entend a motion, I'll make the motion.
I entertain a motion.
Yes, sir. Ms. Chairman, I make a motion that we move forward with Buckley for the architectural services for the health department.
A second.
Motion to secondly, move forward with James Buckley with Mr. David Holton representing tonight, so...
In person.
How was our working relationship with Buckley?
We'll work on that.
We can work on that part.
Hey, he still need to get some virtual...
I'm trying to tell you.
You might want to talk to those historians that were here.
Hey, hey, but at least he is here.
He's here.
He's here.
He's here to get his check in person.
All in favor? We'll move forward. Get to work with you guys again, sir. Look forward to, this lady right here, oh my God, that's the one you got to please. Look forward to, great project.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, David.
The order in negotiating.
All right, State Fiscal Recovery Fund grant application.
Yes, sir. Ms. Chairman, we have kind of pretty much covered that with the water system discussion. So, as long as we can decide, you know, what to include in that application. The other part I'll tell you is that Mr. Long is finalizing some numbers for possibility of another inclusion for a separate pot of money related to that industrial interstate road project. But that, I think we've pretty much covered, as long as we can make a decision about application on the water, that's the main thing for next time.
Okay, at our next meeting?
Yes, sir.
All right. Be ready. I compensally request WorkSource Coastal.
There's a, there's a copy actually from Ms. Daisy Jones, Executive Director. As you know, you're leasing out a building to the Reentry Coalition over there across Jones, Justin Jones. And the, again, the email kind of speaks for itself. You're aware that the WorkSource Coastal building was burned, suffered some damage not too long ago. They haven't been able to get that up and running. And so, I wasn't really aware. These folks are been kind of moving around the community, trying to find a place to interview people and continue the WorkSource. So, they've just requested that because they do lease from us, they want to have a third-party occupant in there. Wanted to see what the commission's pleasure on that is. Don't really see a problem legally with that. We would probably modify their lease just to recognize that, to, you know, indemnify us and anything that might happen for folks that come in to see them. And I'd get with Mr. Davis on that. But if that's the board's desire, then I'll be glad to get with him and work that out with Ms. Jones.
Is there space enough in it?
According to them, there is, yes, sir.
Now, the Coastal Source, weren't they paying rent previously?
They were paying rent over there.
Were they going to pay rent to us?
Well, that hadn't been anticipated here, but certainly...
I would think that they could.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
Have funds, they were paying rent previously.
Be glad to, be glad to...
I don't have a problem with them, you know, in that space, but if they could pay rent...
And, you know, I'm sure come up with some square footage there that would be allocated to them. And we'll come back with some formula for you, sure. Be glad to check into that.
Something, something we all can...
Yeah.
Be glad to check into it.
All right. Do you need a motion for that?
Need a motion on that?
I mean, there's parking concerns and everything. Well, I know it's just right around the corner from the other one.
No.
I think there's, I think there's plenty of parking daily over there in that side lot that can accommodate. I don't think that would be an issue.
Behind the jury store too, yes.
Yes, sir. So, if you allow me to, what I'll do is go ahead and move forward, talk to Ms. Jones about these and talk to WorkSource Georgia folks with that too. And be prepared to come back with, you know, the findings and an amended lease if you so desire.
All right.
But that, Ms. Chairman, before we move on, with that being said, with the, with mace moving out of this building over here, is that something that we, Mike could put them in there permanently?
Well, we do, I tell you, I know this, and you certainly can, certainly can.
Yeah.
There had been... There had been, uh, right now, you've got fire that's located, continues to be located in the EMA building over there.
Okay.
Maybe, maybe we can give some thought to moving some of them over there so that I could get the GIS person kinda out of the closet in the back.
Gotcha. My problem.
That would be okay, but that certainly, I mean, it's...
That could be something that we do in...
I thought that was his office back there.
Well, no, he's not, yeah, he's, he's fine where he is.
Getting kinda crowded, right?
It is.
Okay.
I'll follow up on that.
Subdivision Infrastructure Approval Process. Commissioner Stevens, it says he brought...
Commissioner Marion Stevens.
Mr. Long, could you come to the mic? If you would. Now, reason why I asked for this to be back, and I don't know if any other commissioners up here have subdivisions within their district that's not deeded over to the county. Am I saying it right, Mr. Long?
Yes, there are at least two in your area that are not deeded over to Liberty County.
I got six.
Six. So, that may be correct. There's a lot of them.
No, I'm saying, now, I could be wrong, so anybody can correct me. One of them is Angler Edge.
That's correct. That's one. I wasn't counting that one.
One is Ridge.
That's actually deeded to the city, but they hadn't added, added it to their intergovernmental agreement.
Yeah, those, yeah, those are inside the city limits.
Just headways, okay.
Acadia subdivision.
Acadia subdivision, that's correct. It's not.
Okay. Cross Creek?
Cross Creek is not.
The Trails?
Trails is not.
And Hampton Ridge, the one across from...
Hampton Ridge.
And Walthyville?
That's Walthyville. That's, that's Walthyville.
Come out across from Bakerdon Church over there.
Yep.
That's in the city of Walthyville.
It's in the city of Walthyville. And they got it, but they hadn't added it to their intergovernmental agreement.
What, what's the name of the one marred under by the big flag on Leroy Cofa? What, what?
That's Haberson.
Haberson?
Hampton, yeah.
Yeah.
And, and the reason why, 'cause I know Chairman knows about it, Mr. Brown, like the Trails, we've talked about Trails for a long time. And there's another one across from the fire station in Colonel Law.
Fire station in Colonel, oh, yeah, yeah.
I can't remember the name of it.
Half Moon.
Huh?
Moon or, uh... Oh, I say the name of it.
What I'm, what I'm getting at, there's still about six subdivision that's in my district. And like I said, I don't know of any others in any other commissioners. This is something that we need to look at as a full board. What can we do to go back and help these people? Because these people pay taxes. And we know how the Trail subdivision is. People are still stated building in the Trails, and they've gone back to building in Angler's Edge.
It's gonna be built out shortly.
So, Mr. Long, could you explain the process, not trying to put you on the...
No, 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 that's, that's...
On the time someone submit a permit to build a subdivision. How's the tracking done from there?
So, what happens is, um, they'll come, get your construction plans, preliminary plat, all that approved. They'll go out and they'll build the infrastructure. And then, they'll get it all inspected, and then they come back and they file a final plat. And the final plat dedicates the roads for ingress and egress only. It doesn't accept them over for maintenance. Have to post a warranty bond for the work. And then, what should be happening at the end is they should come to you at the end of their warranty period and request that the roads be accepted for maintenance. This is where a lot of the disconnect happens. Most everywhere else, the assumption of maintenance occurs at the end of the warranty period. Hansel it occurs that way. Walthyville, it pretty much occurs that way. Most cities and counties around us have that. We require the extra step to request that our roads be taken over for maintenance. A lot of times, that doesn't occur. And for instance, like Cross Creek, that didn't occur. And then, when it did try to occur, the developer was dead. There was no money to bring it up to speed to get it adopted. And then, it just, it continues to fall apart because nobody's been pulling any maintenance on it whatsoever for twenty-five years. So, same, you know, and there are some caveats to almost every sudden. But we do have the process that requires that that developer request that the road be accepted for maintenance. We don't go out and solicit them to request that it be turned over to the county for maintenance.
So, hold on, just, just a minute. So, is, is that possibly right there where the breakdown is at? Because you don't...
That's where the breakdown is.
Because we don't, we, we don't go out and solicit that the county takes it over?
And our bond does automatically renew, so the renewal of the bond should be prompting them to do it.
Should. I think it's a combination too of releasing the bond and not requiring them to do it. The other thing has happened over time with some of these you mentioned, as you're aware, is developers will come before the board and say, I, I don't wanna pave. This is a private subdivision. It's non-gated, but I'm never gonna turn these roads over to the county. And then, so the paving requirement, then that's been some time back, got waived. And a decision was made when, when the subdivision was approved by the board.
I don't have listed.
Yeah, it was, it was waived. And, and so, then down the road, which is where we are with those, that's a problem.
So, but what about the ones that, I'm just gonna say, uh, the Trails?
That was one that was never gonna be public. That was one that when it was presented to the board back, gosh, whenever it was, that, that was going to be a private subdivision, and it was never intended for, for the county to have to maintain those roads. And so, they were granted a waiver at the time of plat submission of this board. The board waived the requirement to pave those roads in there or to have them public.
Just, just a quick question, but we're not, we're not waiving anymore, are we?
Well, you've had some come, not recently, but you, you, there, there's nothing that precludes a developer from coming to you and saying, I don't desire these to be public use roads. I desire these to be private roads. And that is something they would have to get a special exemption from the board for.
Well, if...
Right, Trent? Do we have to, to piggyback on what Mr. Brown is telling? They are required, and it does, there is some language now in our ordinance that says, even if you are gonna be a private subdivision, you have to build...
Up to...
Yeah, we, we got a standard, right.
That's what I, I was...
Yeah, you got a standard, but of course, the problem that happens is the standards there, they get older. They're not maintained by the Property Owners Association or whoever was gonna maintain those roads, and they deteriorate. And that's, and that's what happens.
Right, so, so I, I guess we might need to get with Kelly and, and add some more verbiage with that. If, if, if they're saying that, okay, they're gonna keep it private, but we're telling them, even though they keep it private, they still have to maintain a certain requirements, then if they waive that, they can't come back to us. But the issue is with that is the change of ownerships.
That's right.
You see what I'm saying?
Yeah.
So, so in other words, we shouldn't even give them that, that choice. Because, again, it might not be us up here, but it's gonna be some other commissioners and a whole room of angry people saying the same thing. We pay taxes, so, I mean, can, can we do that?
I don't disagree. I think, I think the only thing to think about, what Bob got us down to, Mr. and I, I think the only thing to think about is, uh, just off the cuff, if, if you had a subdivision that was developed that was going to be free access, i.e. non-gated, non-secured.
Absolutely.
Then that's one that you'd probably say, nope, those need to be public roads. You're gonna provide us, yeah, if you're gonna provide us with, 'cause it's very possible that in the coming years, you're gonna have some pretty nice gated communities. And those people are gonna buy those because they don't want the public in there.
And, and that's fine, 'cause, 'cause, 'cause the ones behind that gate, they could afford to fix that road. You, you know, I mean, 'cause honestly, that's, that's, that's why they have a gated community. So, when they do have those type of issues, their HOA or whatnot, they get together and fund that. But for the ones that are non-gated from here on out, it's not just their requirements, and we say, okay, we waive. No, it, it needs to come to us because, like I said, it might not be us up here, but it's gonna be the same issue.
Yeah, yeah, and those are required. They are right now required to come to the board. And that's nothing that a staff can waive. That's nothing that planning commission can waive.
Right.
The Board of Commissioners in acceptance of, of that plat would say, okay, they're gonna have to be public. And then, again, you know, the only way the county can officially accept the road is by a vote and a second, which generally happens after it's been inspected and approved. And then, now, we go ahead and accept the roads, right? So, you, you will have a couple of shots at that, yes, sir.
Okay.
So, Joey, even if it's, if it is gated, who, who does the, the inspections? Do, do we do that?
We would still.
Right now, that falls under the Billings and Licenses Office.
Well, but the roadways, you, you're talking about the roadways.
When it comes time to...
The roadways.
Except for maintenance.
Right.
But during the...
We, we're involved, but we, we'll never own it because it's, it's private.
If, if, if the board approves it to be private.
To be private.
I don't know of any gated right now.
Yeah, the only ones that's gated is Bluff Creek.
Yeah, Bluff Creek is, that's true.
What gated communities?
Yeah, Bluff Creek.
Gated.
Which one?
Bluff Creek.
Out of Coast?
I'm driving around.
There's some down there on the coast.
That's the only gated community we've got right now.
Gated communities?
Yeah, there's only, there's one at Bluff Creek, and the other one, the only other I'm aware of is gated down. There's not really a subdivision. Well, Hampton Island.
There's none down there.
But it's, mm-mm.
No.
Okay. I don't know of any, but they're come.
They may have had a gate up, and that's another thing. Some of them had a gate up, but now, like, like Commissioner Gillis said, now the gate is wide open.
Okay, what, what, again, too, too much in, in the weeds, Mr. Chairman? So, the, the list of subdivisions that Commissioner Stevens was talking about, that haven't been deeded over to us, correct? Are, are they, are they up to par standard?
No.
So, none of them are?
Yeah, my recommendation on those, and I know we've kicked it around for several years, as a matter of fact.
Yeah.
It's, it's to, if you, if, you know, it, it will involve a sizable capital investment that, that is an investment. But I, I think we need to get a handle on what that investment is, to bring back to you. Let Mr. Long look at what that engineering is. And in some of those cases, and the Trails is one, you go in there and you could dump a bunch of rock in there, and you could take it over, and it's going to be a maintenance nightmare for you. I think you need to look at permanent and temporary. And you need to be able to gauge each one of those communities and say, where have we got to get to? And is there anything we can do in the interim to help these people out? That's not going to really just overburden the road department and not work. So, I mean, if, if you could allow Trent and I to look at those subdivisions, that's, that would give the board, I think, what it really needs. And, and then, we can look at funding some of that, look at where the funding can come from.
And, and like I say, hear me out, other commissioner, I'm not just looking at district one, I'm looking at the whole, the whole county, you know?
I don't, I don't think, there are no other ones.
I don't know of any.
Other than the ones that, that you just named.
Yeah.
I think the ones you named are the main ones in the whole county.
I, I don't...
The rest of the subdivision is all in the HOA. They're different.
The county maintains the one that I have out there.
You wanna have any in your district? You don't?
I don't have any in mine. We, we do, we do things differently in the city.
Darren, were you the commissioner back there? Oh, my bad.
All right, y'all.
Who was before you?
I'll be glad to look at that.
You know, it's pretty interesting. Well, the only gated community I know that really works right now is in the city of Hansel. That's back in there in the back of Hacks pasture. That's one of those...
Right, right, right.
Different area that was built, and it's, it's...
Well, that is, is one, where is that now?
Still, still...
In there beyond all those houses that were built down Frazier, you know, on down in Hacks.
It's a, a little something over there, um, by Wallace Martin School, like a apartment complex back there that's got...
Yeah, that's an apartment complex. It's wholly owned by somebody.
All right, so you go, you guys gonna break back? I still think some of these, the Trails, I'm, I'm sorry to keep talking about that, but every time I, I think about that subdivision, man, man, my heart hurts for the individuals out there. And, you know, we, we've talked about that for many years. Commissioner Jones, you weren't up here yet. You, you, you missed it.
You need to ride in there.
Just, just take a ride in there. And, and it doesn't matter if you live in a fifty thousand dollar house or a million dollar house. As stewards of, of citizens, it, it just, I, it still gives me a bad taste in my mouth. And I still don't know what we could do, but I, we need to look at the Trails and all of those. Even if we have to amend what we're saying, the requirements to let these in and then bring them, what?
I, you know, hey, and, and again, I, Trent, I'm sorry, is, is to, is let us look at what a, a fix would be, even if permanent, but then temporary, where we wouldn't throw money away.
Right.
Where we could try to achieve, go towards that end goal.
Right.
And, and I think that's something we can look at. And it may involve tearing out. It will involve...
The, the Trails, just, just...
Trails is a tear out.
Just from riding through there, you, you got to start like it's brand new.
Yeah, you know, the section, well, the section from the highway, you know, you get to a second portion in there, and it's actually held up pretty good. I mean, there's some sections in there. We looked at it before, but that first section is...
I don't know. You better go back and check again.
Well, it's been about a year.
Every time I ride by there, I think about it.
I'm, I'm telling you, like...
I appreciate, whatever we can do...
Yeah.
To help these citizens out within Liberty County.
Them, and so, this won't happen ever again.
Yes, going forward.
Going again.
I'd also like to make a recommendation that Mr. Brown could bring, and I could bring back to you. There are some modifications I would like to make to the acceptance process and the inspection processes that go along that we don't have in our ordinance now. But what's happening is most all the good pieces of land that have good dirt are gone.
Yeah.
So, we're dealing with a lot of really poor, high clay soils. And, you know, right now, our ordinance just says six inches stone, inch and a half asphalt. And then, it's quiet. I wanted to put some more, uh, design requirements in there that, you know, you have to show that the soil types will handle the traffic load. I want to give performance standards required in the ordinance that say, okay, I want the traffic to be able to handle this load. So that they've got to look at more than just six inches stone, inch and a half of asphalt.
Please do.
They, they gotta prove that what they're gonna do is gonna work. And then, what I'd like to also be able to do is have some requirements in there for, um, geotechnical testing of the subsoil before the road is put in, before the stone is down. More than just our proof roll. Now, we get a lot of information from walking behind a dump truck, figuring out whether that thing's gonna move or not, and usually, I can tell. But if you don't have somebody that has experience walking behind a dump truck, figuring out whether that soil's gonna work or not, you know, you, you're taking a chance. So, I would like to phase in some, uh, testing of the subgrade and testing of the stone as we go along. That way, it's gonna make, you know, that way, it makes it easier for the next generation of folks that are coming up. I got guys that are working for me that wanna be able to do this and carry this on after I'm decided to retire or y'all run me off or something. And then, that way, they can have guidance on what to do. Makes it a lot easier when there is a performance standard that you can compare against when you're out there working and building these roadways.
And see, Mr. Long, uh, you know, I appreciate that because, you know, you're the professional. You know, you're our eyes and ears on this. A lot of times, we don't hear the good stuff. We hear, once it goes bad. And then, of, of course, you know, with any scenario, it's, it's finger pointing time. So, you know, we, we truly rely on you to make the best decisions, not just for the builder, but for the county and the citizens.
For the, of the infrastructure of the county.
Yeah, what he said.
Yeah. What I was thinking was, you're the subject matter expert, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, any recommendations you have?
I'll be glad to do that. That's actually, I, I would love to be able to do that.
Right, 'cause more importantly, the, the quality of, of, of the houses increases is better for Liberty County. 'Cause everyone already thinks that they have to move to Richmond Hill before they even, even have, even smelt the air in Liberty County. So, the perception of Liberty County, we have to make sure that, that we focus on that and be Liberty County proud. You heard it, you heard it?
I heard it.
Got you.
You're on my good side now, you're on my good side.
Like I said, Trent-
Thank you, Trent.
I say this much to you, sometime you get up here and before us, and we seem like we picking on, picking at you like I do a turkey.
And sometimes we do.
But we do, I agree, but-
He does.
But we appreciate what you do.
Thank you very much, we appreciate it. I enjoy being up here with you guys.
Thank you.
And, and one, one thing to put on there, on, on those gated subdivisions, that, let's make sure that, that, that it is a gate there.
There you go.
Yeah, yeah, and that, and, and the people, when they get ready to come out of there, they gotta know that they gotta go back in there if they want something done. Because we, we, it, it ain't ours. They wanna call themselves a gated community? Yeah, they could put them a security guard up there and keep us out, that's fine. But, um, we ain't going in there to patch no potholes.
Yeah, having private subdivisions that are privately maintained always turn bad about twenty years later. They did great right off the bat, but twenty years later, the county doesn't think so.
Well, the, the count I'm talking about is gonna be forever.
I agree with you.
Thank you, Trent.
Y'all have a wonderful night.
All right, thank you. Thank you.
Trying to get us out of here shortly. Recreational lease?
This is, uh, this is to re-lease the Riceboro Gem, Riceboro Center down there. We'll tell you, Mr. Davis is gonna offer maybe just a few minor modifications to it, mostly in, in some language. Um, this is the same one you looked at last time, consistent with what's been in place, uh, I think since twenty fourteen, as a matter of fact. So, we just need a motion, a second, to approve it, subject to final revisions by the county attorney, if that's okay.
Need a motion?
Need a motion?
Need a motion to approve the, uh, lease agreement with the Riceboro, City of Riceboro, or the, leasing of the Riceboro Center.
Motion of the second, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Lease is agreed. Administrative update, sir?
Yes, sir, I had a couple of things, um, if the board wanna try to act on it tonight. It, it really is a follow-up to what you approved at your last meeting. We touched ba- ba- base back with ACCG as far as the COLA for their retirees that you approved last time. They require a resolution to be passed. Believe you have a copy of that in front of you there that was provided. If the board wants to go ahead, that would allow us to get that process further in motion and be able to disperse those funds sooner.
Just need to raise those solutions to support the action we already took.
Yes, sir, basically.
All right, chair, ten and motion.
So, move.
Second.
Second.
Second, any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All right, if our retirees out?
Uh, one, one note that Ms. DeFrazier has indicated she would have to, there needs to step aside from the de-facts board, so we'll go ahead and run that advertisement, if that's okay, and provide that.
And that's us, right?
Yes, sir.
Man, we're gonna move.
Oh, Lord.
We're gonna move swift. We're gonna move.
I, I do, we just, I have one quick land acquisition matter for executive session, and a brief would be appropriate.
All right, you got something before the executive session?
Anybody ever check on the trophy?
It's here.
It's here.
Oh, sorry.
It's here.
I'm sorry, I didn't see it.
We, we just need the game, right?
In here.
Okay, and, Mr. Brown?
Go ahead.
Quick question, I know this might, whenever you get some time, if it's possible. On the care money, could you give us those who wanted a brief spreadsheet on how it was dispersed, is that?
You, you talking about the first round?
Yeah, the first round.
I can, I can get with Ms. McLaughlin.
Okay, on, on, on the first round, how it was-
Right.
Dispersed.
Right, right, it, yes, I'll be glad.
Without, we have not dispersed the second round?
Not, not any, no, sir.
Okay.
No, sir.
And when are we going to, I know, we sent out an email the other day, and I could not get back to it, like-
Well, no, actually, you know, we set a committee meeting date of the first, I believe it is, for the committee that was appointed to get together. I will tell you, staff's already sat down and put the buckets together for you to consider, not, but just to tell you, we've been through the CIP and everything, to, trying to give you a starting point in a format.
And you already have the committee pointed for that?
The first.
We did it on, oh, October?
Yeah, twenty-second was, was more favorable.
Well, there was three dates, because we're gonna meet more than one time.
Yeah, yeah.
So, it was like three dates.
I remember I-
I, 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 I'll take a look at it again.
Yeah, just holler at me. Just holler at me.
Well, you know, it's them two.
Hey, I'm, I'm, I'm going off, I'm, I'm going off the dates that were provided.
You got something before?
Be, be glad, be glad too, the, the, here, here's the other thing, and I think you and I had talked about this, Mr. Chairman, is that, uh, you know, there've been some requests with school sports starting back up, uh, for the commission to possibly consider, uh, doing something different there. So, some numbers for you real quickly, is our, is our transmission index, as of today, was eight fifty. When we moved to back up, the last time, that transmission index was about eight sixteen. So, so we're, we're, we're almost back to where we were. Uh, some time ago, we have been on the, luckily, on the downward slide, hospitals still at capacity and above. That being said, but we, we talked about being consistent with kind of what the school athletics were doing, and Jimmy and I were on the phone about it. If it'd be the board's preference to, once again, temporarily, and I know it, it has to be a scale based on the index, uh, to, to go back to where we were and, uh, open up those outdoor pavilions again, uh, for use, and which would open up the swim team for use of the pool. Uh, and Mr. Martin still has time, if we wanna do that now, to go ahead and try to engage for those fall sports, to be able to do that.
I support that.
I agree.
Joe, and I was saying, listen, we have to be flexible, and when it, when it rears up again, we have to go back.
We have to do what we have to do, but, but actually, Ms. Brown, that, that's, and Mr. Chair, that's what I was about to talk about.
Yeah, thanks.
And he dumped that in the butt. I, I support that, uh, I, I think we do need to try to get to some type of normacy. But again, watch it.
Watch it.
And then, you know, make the decision accordingly.
Exactly.
Will he contact the, um, the man with the swim team?
We'll want to wait till tonight.
Okay.
And we will, first thing in the morning.
You will? Okay.
First thing in the morning.
Thank you.
That all, sir, before the executive session?
Yeah, just one quick executive session.
Listen, guys, I got a card from, uh, Ms. Lecter Andrews' family thanking the county for its support. You know, they lost her recently, so there's a card, thanking card from the county, thanking us for our, our support. All right, chair, ten and motion, go into executive session.
That'd be for land acquisition.
Land acquisition. I heard a motion on second, all in favor? We're not in executive session, we're just us in here?